Meeting of the Marquette City Commission for Wednesday, August 14th, 2019 is called to order. If you would please rise together with the commission and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you would...
Commissioner Frazier just stepped out, I think he's coming back in.
He'll come back. Clerk, if you would conduct the roll.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Hill, here. Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds. Mayor Stonehouse.
Here. Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds is running late today, she'll be in in a little bit. So if I can have a... We either need a motion for excuse, or we just by consensus allow her to appear. Makes sense? Consensus, we have agreement? Okay. Good to go. That brings us then to the approval of the agenda. And if I can have a motion for approval, Commissioner Schlegel.
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second, Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Further comments?
None.
Seeing none.
None.
All in favor? Signify by saying yes.
Yes.
No by no, hearing none. Motion passes six-zero. That brings us then to public comment. And I remind folks that comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. And please use the podium to stage right.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I have several questions and comments related to some of the things we're discussing today and some of the things we'll be discussing in future meetings. If you turn to page 11, it's the future committed funds, AKA sleeping dragons. Item number one, Cliff's Dell plant site remediation minimum 1.391, $1,280. Says ongoing testing started, consultant discussing with Eagle. My understanding is a sleeping dragon is not yet fully funded, and if someone could speak to if this is a fully funded line item, or if it's something that's going to happen if you get enough money, I'd appreciate it. I also have a request, if there's any historical record on how much has been spent on the Cliff's Dell site from prior budget years, if that document exists, I'd like to see it. If it doesn't exist, I'll put in an FOIA request to get it squared away. Item two, there's two items, retirement liability, MERS, and retirement liability, fire police. As you know, I've been running for office now for a little over two years. Every month, a person comes up and talks about the mythical three people that worked for the city for a short amount of time and ended up with lifetime benefits. And if someone could please address if that's a myth, please put it to rest, and if it's not a myth, what's real or not real about it, I'd very much appreciate it, because I really don't know how to answer these people. And the last item I have today, if you look at page 13, in the small print, it says pavement, paint markings, and there's a cost associated with that. I wanted to share with the city that I thought it was a very good investment of city funds to get our own paint machine for the roads, for all the reasons that were articulated. But since we're one of the few municipalities in the area that have such a machine, I wanted to suggest that efforts be made to offer it to rent to other municipalities in the area that may have special painting situations, that they can't get someone to come up here and paint for. Because if there's idle days on that paint machine that we could make any money renting it to another community, that would seem to make a very good use of it. And that's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us down then to the consent agenda. And commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding approval of the consent agenda? Commissioner Campana?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any further comments?
None.
None? None? Any further comments, commission? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by voting yes.
Yes.
Opposed by no. Hearing none, item passes six-zero. That brings us down to new business budget review, and I will turn that over to the city manager for conducting the remainder of the new business items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll start with a few brief comments. I don't know when best appropriate, but I can take a short stab at answering some of those questions that were presented during public comment. The first question regarding the Cliff's Dell, I would ask that you reserve those for the third meeting. That's when we will be addressing those, when community development is here. I forgot the second question, and the third one was yes, or no, maybe that was the second question. The three people on insurance are not a myth. It's a situation that occurred many years ago. One of the employees was long-term, two were short-term. The issue was resolved through the court system, and there are three employees that were involved in that, and they are currently under our health plan.
But that was not as a matter of policy.
Correct.
That was a one-time exception.
That was a one-time exception that went through a legal process, a lengthy legal process, I might add, that did not necessarily end in the benefit or in the favor of the city.
Thank you.
Okay, and was there a third question, Margaret?
The paint machine. But we rent it out to other communities when it's not being used.
Oh, I don't think we could do that, because it's a rather complicated machine, and it took our staff most of last summer how to figure out how to run it. And it's an expensive machine, and I... If someone wants to lease our staff, or maybe that's a possibility, but that's something I'm not real comfortable supporting right now. So moving on to the budget, just as a brief introduction, once again, my thanks to Gary for working hard, and his staff, Mary, in putting together another comprehensive budget. Gary puts in some long hours, and his staff does as well. The budget, I think you'll see, will be balanced, and Gary will explain the details. I mentioned Monday night that there will be a deficit that will need to be compensated out of reserves. It's something that was not unexpected, it's something we've been planning for for some time. That deficit will probably continue into the near future, however, we plan for that as well. I would like to point out that, as I did Monday night, that if it wasn't for the fact that we were able to pay off the two outstanding bonds, that being Founder's Landing and the other being Hartwood Property, that deficit would have been increased by at least $1 million for this year, which would have forced us to either make cuts or spend more money out of reserves. I will say that the budget has been trimmed, I mean, there's no real excess. You will see, and it will be explained by Susan and each department head that's involved, that there are two new positions in this budget. Both will be explained, one will be in the fire department, because of our increasing number of rental units and inspections that are going to be necessary, and the other is going to be in our motor pool division, because of a new opportunity we have with maintaining fire trucks for surrounding communities. That particular position will more than fund itself from the revenue generated by repairing and maintaining fire trucks. So with that, I guess I'm... I don't want to say I'm relieved, but I'm kind of relieved that our deficit isn't as much as it could be. I'm happy with the fact that department heads presented what they needed to run their departments. You will see a few changes as we proceed through the process, but every change was met with the intent of bettering our service. So that's all I have. Gary?
Thank you, Mike, and this is the first session of four exciting budget sessions we get to do. So I'm going to do a brief presentation, it won't be nearly as entertaining as last year's, but there are some things I wanted to point out in the budget. And a lot of this information is in the front part of the budget, but I realize there's well over 200 pages, and you don't have very long to read through all of that. So what we're looking at, we have four scheduled budget hearings today, and we'll cover... And each one really has a theme to it. Today, we'll cover the administration and the public safety. On August 19th, we usually call it the John Swinson Show, because it'd be mostly community services. August 21st is really kind of a hodgepodge, it's community development, public works and utilities, but they are all linked together. And each person that presents that night, they really all kind of have a hand in a lot of the same budgets. And then August 28th, we try to keep it light, but that's where what I call the friends of the city, like the library, DDA, LFA, and Brownfield present. And that's also the opportunity to wrap up, have final discussions. And then you'll set a public hearing that night for September 9th. And then September 9th, at the commission meeting, we'll have the public hearing and hopefully adoption of the budget. And then October 1st, the new budget starts. So it's all kind of a whirlwind from here. Just some highlights, as Mike said, this budget's being recommended with no layoffs, no reductions in wages and fringe benefits. And really, everybody is being very responsible in budgeting unless they're really good at hiding it and we can't find it. As Mike alluded to as well, prior to yesterday, we were looking at a $360,000 deficit, which we had the reserves to make up for, and as you know, that's the result of losing our largest taxpayer, We Energies. So the deficit is actually less than the one we have in the current year, which was just over $500,000. But because of the property sales, as Mike said, we were able to eliminate the debt service for Hartwood Forest Land and Founder's Landing, which is pretty close to $1 million a year in debt service. So without that happening, this would be a completely different story that we'd be sitting here in front of you telling. But with the... Susan and Fire Chief Ian Davis, they'll talk more about why the projected deficit's going to go up more than the $360,000. But based on the numbers I have as of this morning, we're probably looking at about a $420,000 deficit. Now, just some statistical numbers, one mill of property taxes, we project to equate for FY '20 to...
What is it? Can you read these?
It's right here.
We project one mill of property taxes to be $626,000. Now, this is lower than years past. It was getting up to close to $700,000, but because of the We Energies situation and other smaller tax tribunals, we're down to $626,000 for one mill of property taxes. 1% of utility rates equates to stormwater, $15,000, water, $47,500, and sewer, $61,400. And if you want more detail, there's... We have the transmittal letter, which is pages five through nine in the budget book. And if anybody's watching on TV, I will attempt, like I did last year, to put the budget up on the screen. But it's also on the city's website, which is marquettemi.gov, and there's a link on the very front page that you come to, so feel free to follow along, and you'll be seeing exactly everything that we're seeing as well. Just a few more highlights, and this is general fund focused. It's just comparing the budget for FY '19 with the budget we're presenting for FY '20. And as you can see, is where the dollars are coming in at, property taxes as a percentage of the whole pie are... is declining, which is to be expected with We Energies closing down. Now, we hope to build... that that will be building back up with our economic development endeavors. And at some point, too, we hope to get We Energies, the taxable value, back up to par on that one. State shared revenues staying pretty much the same as far as percentage of the whole. The payment in lieu of taxes, or PILT, as you recall, we had a charter change to where the BLP is being calculated a little bit differently. And I will tell you, Miles, the assessor, is very ecstatic over how we made that change. So that's going to stay fairly consistent, at least we're projecting. Years of fees fairly consistent, and we've really anticipating being very successful in some of our grant endeavors. And we'll get more into that as we go into the budget.
Sure. Under PILT, the health plan...
It will not anymore. It would have under the old formula, but we felt like we protected that PILT base by changing how it's all calculated.
Yeah, just to add on, the PILT is now calculated through a percent of gross revenue at the BLP as opposed to the property values that it was before. So property will have no effect whatsoever. So you can close down the whole thing, for all I care.
Going along, just a little snippet about property taxes. We consider fiscal year 2016, and this is just the real property taxes. We were collecting just short of $9.5 million for FY '20, it's just going to be over 8.7 million. So that's a decline of 703,000 or 7.4%. And as you recall, we're projecting one mill of property tax to be $628,000. So just on the revenue side, we're actually losing a little more than a mill of property tax equivalent dollars there. This is something I presented previously, but it's still consistent without proposal A, which is just something we got to live with. But if we didn't have to live under proposal A, we could be collecting over $1 million more each year in property taxes than we currently do. We do have ability to raise tax mileage, we certainly aren't recommending that, but it is out there on the table as an option, that's something the city commission wants to do. We do have a headly limit, and under that limit, we could raise it just a little over 2.97 mils, which would bring in roughly $1.8 million. Or if we were to do a headly override, like the library recently did, we could bring in an additional 4.7 mils, which would be close to $3 million. Now, we're getting into the expense side, and this is just for some comparison. If you'll notice, comparing '19 to '20, and this is based on GASB, which is the governmental accounting standards board, this is their classifications of how all our departments fit in. And as you can see, it really doesn't change a whole lot. The biggest change was in the transfers out, and that's because we don't have to transfer out close to $1 million, because we paid off some of the debt that we have. Here's expenditures again, but different classifications by salary fringes and other... As you can see, everything's really a little bit consistent. If you'll notice in FY '20, fringes are going up a little bit higher, and transfers out again is down. But really, we're fairly consistent from year to year as to how that money is spread out. And as you can see, we're mostly labor-intensive in the general fund. We're over... Close to 70% of the budget is just based on salaries and the related fringes, and that really only gives us like 30% to do all the other stuff that we need to get done. So not a lot of discretionary spending at all in the general fund. Just a few more notes on general fund expenditures, comparing the FY '20 budget, which we're presenting, with the current budget, FY '19. Wages are up $324,000, workers' comp will be up $92,000, and the pension will be up $331,000. So just these three items are going to be over another $700,000 increase, which again is more than a mill of property tax. So if you look at the revenue loss of one mill and the increase of expenditures, just in these three items of one mill, that's two mils of property tax equivalent that we're having to absorb in the budget. And so far, we're successfully, for the most part, to being able to do that. As I said, as of this morning, we're probably looking at a $420,000 deficit. So that's really kind of what we're... The rules we have to play with, and I think we're doing a very good job with it so far. Can you mention pensions? Say pensions.
Pensions.
Speaking of pensions, I did have a better segue in there, but I took it out at the last minute, so thank you. Just speaking of pensions, we did just recently get our most current actuarials, which are dated December 31, 2018. The police-fire pension is 72.6% funded. The MERS, which we also have some of our friends of included in the MERS, I broke out the city portion, scrubbed out the friends, and just the city portion, we're at 61.3% funded. The total underfunded liability for those two, the police-fire and the MERS, and this is just the pension, is $37.5 million. And it happened, I think it was last year for the first time, where we had fewer active employees than we do people that are on the retirement rolls. And it's growing even bigger each year. So as of December 31, 2018, we have 157 active employees, and 202 that are retired are inactive. So the way to look at it is that 157 is actually supporting 359 people. So that's one of the problems, too, we're facing with our pension. MERS, and Susan will get into that, and I don't mean to step on her toes, but MERS is also looking at changing some of the actuarial assumptions, which will hit us in probably two years. And from what I'm seeing, it's going to make the situation even more dire for us, so we'll be looking at having to increase the required pension contributions just to keep up.
Question. Gary, don't we disappoint with the actuarial...
That is the hope, but we're a long way away, so... They're trying to get us down to, what is it, 20 years amortizing the...
Well, our open divisions are at 21 years right now, but the closed divisions, or the management, where we close them off, are down to seven years amortization this year. And they're going to go down next year to six years, and the year after that to five years. So your payments are going to continue to be huge until that is paid off, because they're making you pay it off faster.
You must be getting this part.
In theory, they will be paid off. Yeah.
I mean, there's one...
Yeah.
All would discuss.
Isn't MERS supposed to be making projections in an accurate manner? I mean, you say it's going to get worse, their projections are going to... They're supposed to be projecting income for this fund, but it sounds like their projections are out of line.
Well, every five years, they change their assumptions, and they do an assumption study. And they've been lowering their expectation of what their investments are going to return.
Okay.
So they're expecting in the future that they're going to be getting less in the way of investment income to support. At the same time, they're looking now at new amortization or new mortality tables that are going to be geared specifically for public employees. Apparently, public employees live longer than private.
We can take care of that.
So with that projection, they're saying that your liability is going to go up, not down.
I understand also that after we had the little crash we had, oh eight, I think, that MERS is... The state or the feds now have driven us from being aggressive in terms of investment. In other words, we used... I remember when everybody was funded well up there in the 90 and above percentile. Then we had dump, and we've never recovered from that, because you're essentially only buying the goldest of the gold securities that return virtually nothing. Does that make sense, or am I...
Yeah, I don't think it impacted pension funds at all.
Tend to be very conservative.
Yeah, pension funds are conservative, but they do have a lot more options than what I do in investing the city's money.
Okay.
But that's really not a factor. But yeah, 2008 was a very bad year for investments, and also 2018, December was a very bad year, and MERS actually reported a negative 3.5%, I think, investment return. So anytime that turns negative, that just puts pressure, and we have to fork out some more dollars in the future to recover from that.
But what is MERS returning now, percent?
I could not tell you as of right now. I can look it up.
Yeah. The other thing is there, with the 2008 recession, there was a huge loss. Well, MERS took that loss. Instead of crediting it all to 2008, they spread it out or smoothed it over 10 years. So even if, let's say, the fund returns 7.9%, if we still have some smoothing that we're realizing, that drops our actual return down to, let's say, 6%. So that smoothing is still in there. It was for 10 years for 2008, so this should be the last year of that smoothing. And then going forward, they have adjusted their assumptions, and they're doing smoothing over five years and not 10 years.
I mean, what I'm trying to get everybody to make sure they understand is that what the government does and what MERS does with investing and fund return is radically different than what you and I can do downtown with our broker. I mean, our portfolios may look terrific, because you've got the opportunity to go after aggressive stocks with good picks, and MERS is just plowing along with the safest of the safe. So you're never getting ahead of the game as well as you would if you were a private investor. Thank you.
Yes, that is correct. And just one final word, but so there's really two factors that are hitting the city pretty hard, is the investment returns and also people living longer than what the actuarials originally projected. So as I morbidly say, you're going to have a really fun retirement party, but...
Don't eat the cake.
Don't. Don't eat the cake unless you want to help our retirement system.
Thank you.
So going back to the presentation, this is a slide I wanted to keep in from last year, because I just liked it. In the transmittal letter, we explain what Prince Charmings and Sleeping Dragons were, because I believe someone, may have been Margaret, mentioned, you know, what does that mean? We do have definitions in the transmittal letter, but unless you read it word-for-word, you may not see it. So this is the definition. Sleeping Dragons are potential unfunded liabilities or future committed funds. And these are typically tax tribunal cases, lawsuits, infrastructure needs, and unfunded liabilities. Prince Charmings, they're authorized potential supplemental appropriations. And really, the way we try to handle Prince Charmings, for things we had to cut out of the budget to make it balance or get it closer to balancing, we put those on the Prince Charming list. And even though it hasn't happened yet, but if we do get some surprise funding source, then we'll start going to that Prince Charming list and bring that back to the city commission to say, these are the things we would like to fund. And here's the Prince Charmings list. Right now, it's just over $448,000. So just a few items there. Last year, it was at $2.1 million. This year, it's below $500,000. And the Sleeping Dragons list, a lot of these are the same story year after year after year, but as we get funding, like the Cliff's Dell site, that's getting closer. We used to have Lake Shore Boulevard on here, but now we're getting some funding for that. for that, so we took, took a lot of that, while it's still on here, but we're still seeking funding for a Lake Shore Boulevard. But a lot of these, you know, are carryovers from previous years, and these are items that we know are out there, and we continue to seek funding for them, but we don't, we aren't in a position to where we can put these into the budget just yet. And just the costs that we know about, there are three that we don't know. So if you added in those three, it would be well over seventy million dollars of Sleeping Dragons items, which really equates, if you look at the overall city budget, usually year after year, we come in at about seventy million dollars. So just to address these items would be a complete one-year budget to do that and doing nothing else. Kind of the moral of the story for FY twenty, we still view the issues facing the city as a revenue problem and not an expense problem. We are trying to address the revenue problem by proposing property sales along with economic development opportunities. And that's why we would like to stress, when we do bring economic development opportunities, that they are very helpful to the city, and it's really about the only way we're gonna be able to close the budget gap, is to start seeing some of these come to fruition. And then, last but not least, and we haven't talked much about it this year, because last year it was really the focus of conversation, but the third budget session, which is August twenty-first, we'll get more into it, but the utility rate increases are really critical to the survival of our utilities. And that's it for me, so now we will have Susan do her presentation.
Thank you. On Monday, I emailed you a summary of our salaries and fringe benefits for the coming year. Rather than having each department go through their salaries and their fringe benefits individually, we combine them as a, as a whole to talk about them. The budget that I, or the information I sent you on Monday did include one of the new positions, it was the mechanic position in the motor pool. They're proposing this to take over the maintenance and repair of citi, city fire trucks on an in-house basis, and hopefully to generate revenue by doing the same for other communities up here. Eric Steeman will be presenting on, on his budget next Wednesday, and he can give you more information concerning that new position. What wasn't included was a new full-time position of rental code inspector in the fire department. So some of the figures that I gave you will need to be adjusted upwards to account for that new position. And if, if that position is approved, I can certainly forward you the updated figures if you'd like those. For overall salaries and wages, the budget reflects a salary increase of two percent for all management employees and two percent contractual increases for all union employees. The total amount budgeted for wages, overtime, and other salary-based costs for all full-time employees is about twelve million, three hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven. That includes the new rental code inspector, so that's slightly higher than what you had in your packet. Part-time and seasonal wages, I, I don't know if you want me to go through all of these items or just hit on, some of the changes this year, our health insurance was a huge increase this year, nineteen percent. The city's an experience-rated plan with Blue Cross, and we had a bad year. We had a lot of very expensive claims. We also had a lot of office visits, over twelve hundred, office visits alone, not excluding emergency room and specialists. So all of that contributed to a very high experience rating and increases of about nineteen percent. Now, the city does follow the hard caps of PA, five twenty-two, I forgot the name of it, but anyway, the hard cap law, PA one fifty-two. And that limits the amount that we have to spend, but that pushes more the burden on the employees. So this year, we are still under contract, and, and we offer three options under our union contracts, a core, a buy-up, and a buy-down plan. So rather than make any huge changes, we did offer employees the option of a modified buy-down. So because the buy-down has a lower premium, what we normally do is take the difference between the core and the buy-down and deposit that in an HRA for employees that they could use for unreimbursed medical expenses. This year, we offered the modified buy-down, which they just get to pay the lower rate for the buy-down premium without an associated HRA. So that lowers their cost a lot of what comes out of pocket. Now, they'll have a higher deductible and higher office visit co-pays, but it makes the monthly premium amount more affordable. And we did have a number of employees take advantage of that. The other things we tried to do is we introduced a telemedicine service. For six dollars a month, employees can register with a, a online doctor who's available twenty-four seven. They can access a doctor if they're traveling, they forget their prescription medication, they can call or use the app on their phone and get the medication sent to their, to a local pharmacy. They can also, if their child has pink eye and they don't want to bring him into the doctor and have him sit there, they can make the call from home or do a FaceTime app and speak with a licensed physician who can prescribe medications. It's not for emergencies, it's not for serious conditions, but it can hopefully cut down on the number of office visits, therefore lowering our experience for the coming year, and it eliminates an office co-pay for the employee. So we're hoping that's gonna help next year as well. We also switched, actually, CVS was our pharmacy prescription drug provider, and they dropped us because we were not large enough. So we have found a new prescription drug provider, and with that, we're using a pharmacy benefit manager, it's called Aero-X, and they will be actively trying to negotiate discounts on our behalf, looking for rebates, working with doctors to see if we can use generics whenever possible instead of brand-name drugs. So we're hoping all those things will help, next year will be a better year. We also did just get yesterday our Medicare Advantage premium renewals. Unlike the rest of our health insurance, Medicare Advantage renews in January. That's for all of our retirees that are over sixty-five. This was early for us to find out, but the good news is that there will be a zero percent increase in those premiums coming up, so that's good news. Also, this year was the first year that the state has changed the date when they announce the hard caps. They used to announce it in September, October, so I would have to guess the final three months. This year, they announced it in April, so I know exactly what the hard cap will be, and it's only going up two percent next year, so depending on what our renewal comes in at, the employees could be looking at a larger amount again. Retiree health benefits, not a whole lot of changes. We did implement the retiree health funding vehicle last year as a response to PA two oh two. So now our unfunded liability, we'd been doing a pay-as-you-go for retiree health insurance premiums and costs, and now we are starting to pre-fund those. We've set up a trust through MERS, and we are putting money in that every year to help fund that. We've kind of talked a little bit about MERS, I don't know if you, you have any other questions about that? Oh, I should mention, workers' comp has gone up dramatically this year. We are, again, experience-rated with workers' comp. This year, our experience modifier went from point seven seven, which is really good, to one point one two. So that's increased the amount of premium that we need to pay by quite a lot. No, we've had it, we've...
Yeah, we've had some significant ones, yeah.
Wastewater treatment, I had another long-term, high cost. We've talked a little bit about MERS, I don't know if you have any other questions about that. The assumptions for mortality tables and the lowered investment return expectations will be hitting us in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. And again, we expect that's going to increase the amount we have to pay and lower our funded status, probably. But we've pretty much done everything the state has recommended that we do. There's not a whole lot of options left, other than we need to get really good returns on our investments. Any questions?
There we go. Thank you, Susan, nice presentation, and a good job doing what we can to keep the costs down. Question on work comp, what are we doing as an employer to kind of train people and avoid those incidents moving forward? I know we probably do some training upon hire, but...
We do, we have a safety committee, and Eric Steeman is actually our safety coordinator for those. Some of these were just unavoidable fate, I don't know what to say, but, um, you know, we do try to, to do safety programs and safety training every year to reduce the number of back injuries and things like that. We, we train people with the correct way to lift and that type of thing.
Yeah, I, I'm well aware that things happen and you can't control them, but if there, any of them were preventable, you know, the slips, trips, and falls and that thing, but it sounds like these are more fluke accidents, so thanks for the explanation.
Just to jump on that a little bit too, are we doing more with less as far as our, our employees go? I mean, are we, are we asking them to do more, which is causing some of these other injuries, do you think? Is that something of a concern? I mean, I understand the, the police department issues, those are big ones, especially the the...
The three that I'm, I'm thinking of, there, I don't know that there would have been much we could have done to prevent them. And just because of the length and the cost of those, that's, those three long-term cases have had, had a big impact on our rates.
If you take those three away, are you, are you thinking that we're more in line with previous years?
I think once those drop off, yes, I think you'll see our, our rates returning. We were, point seven seven is, was a very good rate, and...
And, you know, asking as the guy outside, without, without all that information, you know, I just see a lot of times where people go and they say, well, we're gonna lose this position, and then we're not gonna fill it, and then all of a sudden, you've got somebody that's doing twice as much work, and they're spending themselves that much more, but I'm happy with that explanation, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. We'll now jump into the actual budget book, which is labeled FY twenty twenty proposed budget. So the way this works, and it won't be any different than we've done in many previous years, but normally, we'll start out with the effect sheet for each department, then if they have a fee schedule associated with that, we'll go into that, and then get into the expenses. We'll have each department head and each middle manager that had a part in the budget, they will be presenting as well. So it's kind of what I call the dog and pony show, but it's, feel free to ask questions as they come up, don't feel like you have to wait until the end. And we will, we will try to accommodate your question as best as we can. Sometimes we may have to punt and say, we're gonna have to look into that, but we will bring that information back to you at the next budget session. So starting off, we'll go into the non-departmental revenues, which would be page forty-four of the budget. Reason these are non-departmental, really, we have divided up the revenues into each department as much as possible, and some of these, we can't really do that, so we just call them non-departmental, and I just go over them at the very beginning. But this includes the property taxes, also the state's shared revenues, which are mostly sales taxes and a little bit of income taxes, and that's based on formulas the state has. It's broken down between constitutional and statutory. We're actually projecting to see a little bit of an increase in that, and these projections came from the state themselves, so it's not numbers that I just pulled out of the air to make things work. So we're hoping, you know, but sales taxes are based on the economy too, because I don't know if you've noticed, but today, the yield curve, curve inverted for the first time since two thousand and seven, I think, which means the two-year bonds are now yielding more than the ten-year bonds. And that's significant, because for the past fifty years or so, it's been a very accurate predictor of a recession is going to happen in the economy. Doesn't say when it's gonna happen, sometimes it can be a little bit of a delayed effect, and sometimes it can be a little more immediate. So that's important for the state revenue sharing, because a lot of that is based on sales taxes. And as we have learned, when there's a recession, people tend to not buy as much, so that could mean that revenue stream comes in at a little bit lower than what we're projecting, or what the state is projecting. The other one too, cable TV, TV franchise fee, we do get a franchise fee from Charter Spectrum, and it's really been fairly consistent, but the new thing now is what they call cord-cutting. I really have no idea how that might impact this revenue stream. I am projecting a little bit less, but it could be a whole lot more of a drop than what I'm projecting, but I looked in my crystal ball, and it wasn't telling me anything, so. And the rest is based on interest and just kind of miscellaneous types of things, so we try to budget conservatively, but also responsibly, because these are our biggest revenue items, particularly property taxes, and we try to nail that as close as we can. Now, property taxes can be reduced too, because of tax tribunals, and as you've noticed over the past few years, we've seen quite a bit of reduction due to tax tribunals, and it's just a fact of life for us in Michigan. For whatever reason, the people in Lansing haven't dealt with the loopholes that allow these tax tribunal cases, so we're, it's just something we're gonna have to deal with until that happens. And not only is it a revenue loss, but it's also an increase in expenses, because we have to have attorneys defend us in these cases, and sometimes that's not very cheap either, so, yes. Correct, that's fifty percent of the fiscal year, yeah. Correct, a lot of these revenues don't come in at a steady pace, it just varies, so...
So would, so looking at that, this sort of as an overview to think about this, with, with that column, what's the most, I know we're looking to see if there's anything probably coming in at a, at an unexpected rate, either higher or lower. Do any numbers jump out at you based on that idea, or is everything...
No, everything's pretty much what we expect. If you look at the very first one, real property taxes, we are projecting that will come in lower, and that has to do with tax tribunal cases. So that one is next to impossible to predict. State revenue sharing, you know, as of the middle of the year, it's very low, but a lot of those revenues come in later in the year. So according to the state projections, we will actually come out a little bit better than what we budgeted, but again, that's just based on projections, and we really don't know until we receive that money as to what we're going to get. So that's it, unless you have any other questions on non-departmental revenues. If not, we're ready to get into the ex, the normal part of the budget, and we'll start with the central administration, which is mostly like the city manager's office and finance and those kind of fun things, and I believe Sean and Wendy are gonna take the first two here, so page fifty-three in your budget books.
Page sixty-three?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
So this is the, so this is the legislative budget, which is y'all's budget. You look at the revenues, the fees, requesting one thirty, this is just mainly like mayoral w... If you look at the revenues, the fees, requesting 130, this is just mainly mayoral weddings and room rental for this room. We usually don't have any of those charges, but we do include an estimate just in case. Then the KBIC pass-through funds, not really a way to predict those. We do funding for that twice a year, just based on the requests and what the tribe decides to grant to use this as a pass-through. In terms of authorized positions, there's a $200 per commissioner increase and additional $300 mayoral increase. And that's based on an estimate from the local officers' compensation commission, which I believe meets tomorrow. That's what the chair's indicated, they're looking at approving. So, that's what that number's based on. Then, page 55.
Are there any questions on 53 before we move on to 55?
So, wasn't it that there hadn't been an increase for a long time and then there was an increase? Are we going to just start doing a regular small...
I think we've had regular increases over the years. That commission meets what, once every two years? Yeah, so we probably get an increase every two years. And the numbers you're seeing in front of you now are based on what we're predicting they will increase tomorrow.
Thank you.
They tend to do things without particular rhyme or reason.
Yeah.
I'm joking a little bit, but we used to be paid per meeting. And then I remember Commissioner Schneider went down and complained that paying per meeting really didn't encourage a lot of young folks to be able to participate in the commission. So, the commission in turn, the compensation board turned around and made it as a gross number for the year, regardless of how many meetings. And it didn't work out to be a whole lot more, but it was a little different way of doing it. And again, they do what they want to do and luckily, we don't have any input to it or any paid or, you know, board.
Just an FYI, it really doesn't affect you folks, but this commission also... This compensation commission also rules over the BLP board as well, so...
We always tell them they get paid way too much.
Yeah.
They have a roll back.
I didn't want to start anything, I just wanted to tell you that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Increase in work sessions, I think that's warranted, increase, don't you?
We could be doing piecework. We could be doing piecework.
You know, the other side of the coin there is that you folks have gotten a lot done in the last year, so that's a good thing.
Okay, so, page 55, this is a breakdown of your expenditures. We added in line item 740, operating supplies. This was a request of the finance department to separate the budget for commissioned food from what we were using before. So, we just took an estimate of what we spent last year and put that in. In terms of 860, this is an increase from last year. Last year, you guys cut the second MML convention. We budgeted for this year. Last year was the first year that it was taken out, so we put it back in the budget.
For two for this next year?
Yeah, we put two back in for next year. That doesn't mean you have to go to two. But if we want to go to the fall one, we can... We have the money for it. If you don't, we just move it on to the next year.
Yeah, under 880, this is our economic development and promotional budget. It's broken down into chamber of commerce memberships, superior trade zone membership, lobbyists, and then promotional items. I don't think there was too significant of a change in any of those.
It was under 880s?
Yes. Yep.
So, I had a question, city manager, about this a couple of weeks ago when we got on the check register that we pay $5,000 for the superior trade zone and that was part of the economic development. And I was questioning that. So, I haven't had a chance to read the economic development plan yet, but does it contain our relationship with the superior trade zone? I'm looking at Sean because he wrote the plan. So, there's a reason. Could you tell me the reason why we're paying the $5,000 a year?
That would be a Gary.
Gary.
Yeah. I do rep the city for the superior trade zone. Actually, I'm an alternate, but I do show up to all the meetings. It actually started... It's so superior trade zone is actually a part of... The state did an initiative called Next Michigan Zones. So, there's several throughout the state, but there wasn't one in the UP. So, at the time, some leaders from Delta County and Marquette County got together and said this would really be something that we should probably look at. So, there's quite a few members from Delta County and Marquette County. Not all members are contributing members because some of these are smaller townships and they just can't afford it. So, really, Marquette County, Delta County, City of Escanaba, and City of Marquette have... Are considered paid members and the dues are $5,000. It's something that's really based more along the lines of transportation. Like for Marquette County, the focus is around the KI Sawyer Airport. And in Delta County, they have an airport and their things as well. So, it's really more of a team approach to try to bring economic development to the UP. The overall goal, and it may take some time, is to get the entire UP involved. But right now, the focus is on Delta and Marquette Counties. And it's fledgling stages. They just completed a marketing study, which was funded by a grant from the federal government. And the University of Michigan helped tremendously with that. And I think through that, we're going to start seeing some successes along that line.
Sounds like a worthy cause. Wondering if maybe we can have them do a presentation at some point, just to keep us informed as to what's going on? And maybe it doesn't make sense now, but nine months, a year from now, if there's some activity?
Sure.
Thank you.
On the same lines again. At one point in time, we were considering jumping on part of the revision economic plan with the LSCP. This one that you did, thank you, thank you, thank you, a million times thank you. Been waiting for it for a couple of years. This does not, in conjunction with them whatsoever, right?
No.
Because there was another fee that could have been associated with that, which would have been much more...
The previous paid economic development plans that we had prepared in the past all had some component that involved a relationship that was costing us money.
Right.
Some, over my time here, some people thought that money might have been well-spent, others thought it might not. So, there never was a consensus as to whether it would be a worthwhile effort to enter into an economic development plan that included those kind of partnerships. So, what this one does is it's more general in nature. It does not commit us to any financial relationships whatsoever, but it does emphasize the relationships and working with these other groups as well as other entities. And it meets the requirements of what we need. So, it's more general in nature.
Okay. That's great. I'm really happy to hear that.
Any further questions on this?
As we move on.
56. Page 56.
Page 56, just a breakdown of the revenues for executive. We don't really have any. Our authorized positions and program statistics is displayed in, you know, each budget. Don't really have too many comments on this one. Go to page 57, it's a breakdown of our expenditures. We added in a line 740 as well. We have various food expenses, like the quarterly UP managers' meetings, some other things. So, we established that one and got it out of the other budget per finances' request. And 860 includes the additional MML convention in the fall as well, bearing what we added in for you guys.
This is small, but with the economic club, does that mean the city manager goes... What does that mean?
Correct. It's a membership for someone at my level, in my office to attend, yes.
And what's NMPSA? I just didn't know what that was. Yeah, what does that stand for?
And then other than those two, there's not too many changes. If you have any questions?
Seeing none, move on.
Thank you. Next, we'll get into the best budget we have. So, I'm the department head for financial services. Covered under financial services is finance and accounting, which is one division. We have the treasurer's office, which is another division, the assessing office, another division, and utility billing, which is another division. So... Oh, yes, my apologies, page 58. So, I'm going to present the finance and accounting portion. Mary will present the treasurer and Miles will present the assessing portion. So, under the finance section, we really don't have any revenues. We do have what we call a fixed charge system. And that's related mostly to our enterprise funds. Gatsby has this little quirky rule that they says... That says they want us to show the true cost of what it takes to run an operation, like a water fund, sewer fund, tourist park fund, those kind of the things. So, the trick is, how do you get administrative costs over into those areas? And we do that through the fixed charge system. So, we're actually charging the enterprise funds and we're including that as revenue on the general fund. So, it's not just finance, but it's like the city manager, city attorney, treasurer, human resources. So, a lot of those administrative things, we are charging out. And you'll see in many budgets in the general fund, fixed charges as a revenue. And on the enterprise side, you'll see fixed charges as an expense. And it's really just a way to comply with Gatsby's requirements, show the true cost of what it costs to provide a service. Now, within just the finance and accounting portion, we have three full-time people, myself, a staff accountant, Katie, and Tara is the accounts payable clerk. Then within that, you can see some program statistics that we have. And believe me, you're... The city's getting its money's worth out of particularly Katie and Tara. It's pretty amazing the things that they're able to do. So, going on to page 59, we're getting into the expenses. Really not much to see here. We're mostly labor-intensive. The one thing we're responsible for are the postage machine and the folding machine, which is used really... A lot of city departments take advantage of that. But the finance department is the one that pays for that. And so, we have two costs associated. We have the postage machine rental and then the folding machine rental. So, each time you get a bill that has a stuffing in it, that means it ran through the folding machine. And that little device is more than paying for itself. So, really, not much else in the way of expenses. A lot of these are predetermined by, you know, labor contracts, fringe benefit contracts. And if you have any specific questions, I will be glad to address.
The charges for the implementation of the AMI system, is that in here?
That's mostly in the water fund. It's actually through the JCI project, but that is specific to the water fund.
So, that doesn't... But that's this staff people, isn't it? Or no?
Well, we do the utility billing, but not the meter part. That's in the public works department.
And what I'm getting at is, it's my understanding that there was a great deal of increased time that had to be spent in the... Which is understandable with the implementation. And is that reflected here and that maybe next year it's going to go down?
Utility billing is mostly in Mary's budget. Half of that is in the treasurer's department and then half is put into the water department. But she can explain that better than I can, so... So, are there further questions? If not, we will go on to Mary, page 63.
Well, I'm going to say that I present in another boring budget. Not that it's boring, but just that there's no surprises going into fiscal year 20. Starting out with the revenues that are applicable to this account, really not a whole lot of changes. The trailer park licenses and our commercial landfill fees pretty much stay consistent. We always have the same amount of trailer parks for collections. And we seem to routinely have the same amount of commercial haulers and landfill residential haulers that are coming through. We did make a little bit of a change with the restricted tickets and the parking meter ticket. These are items 656 and 657. With the implementation of the new parking system, which thank you very much for approving that this last fiscal year, it's helped to improve our collections for those tickets that are issued. And then also, having a parking enforcement officer has also helped to lend to some of those increases as well. For authorized positions in this department, there's myself, deputy treasurer, and I have two account clerks that take in all of the revenues for the city. We keep this group hopping every day. And as you can see by some of the program statistics, we're collecting 98 and 90... About 98% of our tax roll is collected through our office and parking tickets as well. Like I said, those have gone up over the last couple of years as we were implementing that new system. Moving on to the fee schedule, I do try and adjust every year the break-even fee for the anticipated labor costs per hour. And so far, we still haven't quite hit the point where the labor into those fees has gone over what we're currently charging. So, I'm proposing no increased fees for my department at this time. Page 65 for the expenditures. Again, keeping it pretty boring, pretty flat, not a whole lot of changes. Things I would like to point out, just the one change in postage has to do with some of the increased mailings for parking statements under the 801 professional and contractual. Those two front-counter positions are the entry-level positions for the city. So, whenever we have retirement and we start to do the major shuffle of personnel around the city, typically, those positions will open up as people start to post into other positions. So, with that, I do like to try and budget for 18 weeks of manpower or temporary labor, just to kind of buffer those fees that we have for the wages that we won't be paying in that department. And in transportation, I'm also budgeting for two personnel to begin training. My deputy is eligible for retirement this year. And in trying to find a replacement for her, I wanted to start somebody going through... It's a three-year process to get somebody trained in through the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association's program. And I want to get somebody started this fiscal year in progressing towards that certification. So, other than that, like I said, no big surprises. And any questions?
I have a question. Are we really getting $42,000 a year for winter parking?
Yes. And actually, this is only half because we split that revenue with the police department as well.
Every year, it's upwards of $75,000, $80,000 a year. It has been for a long time.
We getting it all from Mr. Luttenberg or... I withdraw that comment.
Those are just the people that pay. I mean, there's still some outstanding debt out there.
Rate of collection, though. I remember at one point, I'll go back maybe five or six years, we had a whole pile of uncollected parking tickets. And I remember a real effort was made to clean that out.
I could get some information for you on the rate of collection.
Be curious.
But over the last two years, as we were preparing to get ready for this new system, that staff pushed hard. that staff pushed hard to get any of those outstanding tickets cleaned up. And if we ran into situations where they were just uncollectible, we have written those off at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
What does that fee, I know there's a fee we wrote back a law, we wrote for Gary that says, if somebody doesn't pay their parking fees, it goes into their tax or something. Where does that fall into? Whatever rule we motion we passed while back Gary that said, if you have an outstanding bill or something like that, parking ticket or something like that, it goes, you already clicked a few taxes or something like that?
That applies mostly to the utilities. For parking tickets, the enforcement is you get a nice little boot on your car that you can't remove until you pay your fines. And I heard, uh, I think it was yesterday, our brand-new parking enforcement officer got to do her first boot. So everybody's was excited about that.
The Mike Sherwood, do they, right? You know, Mike could be your next person right there for treasurer, you know, helping. Mike could do it. He's close to retirement. He could help you.
So, so you're saying, um, what's the, uh, so there's eighty-five thousand dollars collected in winter parking?
Roughly seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars annually.
How much per, how many, how many?
Seventy-five dollars, seventy-five dollars a ticket, right?
Yeah, I mean, last year for restricted tickets, there was, um, just under four thousand or that was collected. So thirty-nine hundred were collected last year.
And our goal has never been to raise revenue. Our goal has been to keep the cars off the streets so the public works can plow the streets, so.
Um, and then back to my AMI question, is that number just negligible and I shouldn't worry about it? But it did seem like there was a lot.
I think what you're referring to is that, uh, there was a, uh, a spike, so to speak, in, in our efforts in, in Gary's office as we weaned our way into the, uh, AMI system.
Right.
And Gary is keeping track of that expense. And we are at some point going to look at it and decide how we want to compensate or if you want to compensate for that. But that number should be going down now. It should be, we should be done with it. So it was just a one-time thing.
Wouldn't it be easier to just let the snowball guys bury the card and give Blake's parking guy a little cone of flag to put up on top of it, you know?
Yeah, we, we have done that in the past, but no, the boots work really well.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we'll go to Miles for assessing, which is page sixty-six.
You, uh, look at our revenues, uh, we don't have any changes for upcoming years. Still two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, still stayed the same as prior year. You look at the, uh, the wages, we have three individuals in the office, myself, city brazer and assistant, assessing assistant. The state equalized values, which the city doesn't collect their revenues on the state equalized value. You can see the indication. Any questions on that page, page sixty-six?
Would there be any value in understanding that, uh, commercial versus residential? Is that commonly presented? Cause it's crazy as home prices are going shooting up and, and we do seem to be having a loss in commercial inhabited or used structures. I, I just wonder if that's a way of teasing out, understanding why our SEV has gone down, even though particularly home prices have gone way, uh, going up. And, and we, and also to tease out we energies.
Right. Yeah, the, the we energy is the, is the large item in that state equalized value. I mean, you went from approximately a hundred and four million down to seven million, five hundred thousand, so. But then you had a lot of increases in the rest of the city. But we could provide you, if you're looking for that, we can provide you with that information. Sure?
I'm curious, yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
We see maybe a black box store thing going on with like the market mall being possibly turned out. We knew it was sort of moved out, but, you know, market mall be dead. But there's like a situation where you have a black box store thing or that, or I don't know, it's a new ownership, whatever. Is there something, there's just, as long as they own it, they have to pay the same fee or what's going on with that? You know, just curious, basically.
With, with the big box stores, your question, market mall?
With that possibly getting torn down, you know, it's going to affect their rate or is that just going to, as long as you own it, you just pay the rate or what, you know?
Well, the, the, that particular property is one of our Michigan Tax Tribunal appeals.
Yeah.
So time will tell what the value turns out to be for that.
So as Ron, as long as Ron, Ron wins the case, we're okay?
Uh, it's actually one of the contracts that you signed to have Jack Vancouvering handled, but, uh, yes.
Also Ron's passing the buck, how like Mike does, gotcha.
Well, actually, it's a very specialized thing and Jack Vancouvering, if you don't know, used to be the chair of the tax tribunal. So he's a good person to have in our corner, so.
Money well-spent there, Gary.
I, we consider it very well-spent.
And then on the, the, the new construction parcels, um, it, it seemed like twenty, twenty seventeen is substantially more than eighteen or nineteen. And is there any way to project that into twenty-twenty at this time or is that just, you can't do that and you just wait? And it's all, it's always going to be a past.
Right. It's, it's always going to be, uh, those numbers are generated after the tax rolls, uh, the assessment roll is put in place. And you don't have any hard numbers until the end of March.
And, um, so I think, is, is it? So you can't, I'm really curious. I mean, the ten thousand dollars, that, that's, I mean, this is where we can also start to see increase in property taxes, right? I mean, that's kind of why I'm focusing on this. This is one place where there's an area of growth in terms of maybe getting some revenue. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, well, the, the growth comes, the, the growth factor comes from the consumer price index on the taxable value side. So the, the, the increase in the taxable value can increase by the rate of inflation or five percent, whichever is less. Given the fact that the sales studies are showing that there is a, an increase in the values. On the other side of the coin, you have a number of new construction projects in, that are coming on, online. So those are factors that they have to look at, in addition to the tax tribunal cases.
But I think what you were getting at was that, yes, we hope to increase that last new construction revenue source as new buildings are built on the, some on the property that we sold and some on some private, private properties.
Thank you.
Any other questions on sixty-six? Okay, sixty-seven. The only change you'll see on page sixty-seven is the, are the, um, land division or, or platted lots and unplatted lots. These can take from three to fifteen hours depending upon, uh, you know, how complicated they are. So we're asking an increase from a hundred and six dollars per application to a hundred and fifty dollars to try to give us a little more revenue as far as the amount of time that it takes us to process these divisions. Any questions there?
Let me expand on that a little bit, you know, help me understand that a little bit here. You're asking for an increase because of the amount of time it's taking you to basically go out and, are you physically plotting these or are you talking about the, uh, the, the computed graphic that we see all the time of, here's your parcels?
It's, it's a combination of, uh, of con- conversations with the, with the folks, trying to explain what a platted and non-platted lot is, what kind of application you need to fill out, walking them through the application. Once the application is done, um, we actually, we physically go out and take a look at the site and see if it meets the requirements where we ask for a survey done. We have to make sure there aren't any encroachments. We need to determine what improvements, if there are improvements on the site, are located on the parcel that's going to be split off. Because we need to split off the next year, not only the legal description, but also the values. We need to allocate the values based upon, um, what is located on each individual parcel that's going to be split. Maybe a single split, maybe four or five splits. So it takes a lot of time to.
I got you. Thank you.
Okay.
Cool. That helps a lot. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, and then, uh, our last page is page sixty-eight. We don't have that many changes there. The, the one item I did want to draw your attention to was we have, uh, we're asking for nine hundred and thirty dollars for a wifi. We'd like to, uh, one of the staff to have a tablet so that when they go out into the field, uh, they can input data into that tablet. They can put down how many bedrooms, bathrooms, uh, they can call up on the, on the tablet, the, uh, the city's GIS, so they can look at it, see where it lies. We hope to implement down the road, uh, maybe next year, an actual live database, uh, interface between that tablet and our PSNA software, so that they're not entering the data into the tablet and then having to take the time to come back into the office and then retype the information into a PC. So if we could do it live, it would save us that time that, that they do all those inspections. So we, we do a lot of parcels every single year, uh, require, we have to go out and take a look at twenty percent of each class on an individual basis, uh, each and every year. So, uh, the more technology we have, the less time that we spend in, in the field doing the inspections and then having to come back and put them into the PC, the better, uh, more efficient we become. And we're always looking to be more efficient because, uh, you know, that's, that's the end game. Any questions on page sixty-eight other than that?
Yeah, a quick, just a comment on this, because I deal with, um, home evaluation professionals and they're getting into the technology as well where they're going out with their tablets and they're just onsite punching everything and instead of having to go back out. And just, just a comment would be to potentially team up with these guys in a, in a way that would say, for each time that you go through and you do a, a, a residential evaluation of, you know, just anything in the, within the city of Marquette, if it wasn't something that you had, um, up to date, I guess, uh, just trying to, how to, how to word this properly, but, you know, to pay them fifty dollars for it instead of to get that information from them, because they've got all of the, you know, six bedrooms, three baths, all these different, uh, categories. I don't know if you want to talk about it later on or not, but it's something, if you want to give me a call, because it's, it'd be kind of neat. Might, might save us some money is my point, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mary and Miles, thank you both very much. It's another case of the city's very fortunate to have those two people in its employ. Uh, next up will be the city attorney and Ron and Suzanne, uh, page seventy-three.
Before we start, maybe I could just say something about the previous speaker, the assessor, Miles Anderson. Uh, maybe, all of you don't know, but Miles is a level four assessor. I'm not sure there's another one in the Upper Peninsula. We are very fortunate to have him and he and I work a number of tax tribunal cases and some with, uh, Jack Vancouvering. But yeah, it's, it's really great to have Miles and, you know, we're to some extent up against a, a little bit of a uphill battle because with, uh, proposition A and the, we have a complicated uncapping process in Michigan. So a lot of these homes will up in value, but we don't get to capture those taxes because of the uncapping law. Uh, the other thing I was going to say that Mayor Stonehouse alluded to is that was, uh, there was a number of years, years ago, and, and Gary, maybe you can confirm this or correct it, but I think the city was down about six hundred thousand dollars in unpaid parking fines. And we introduced, uh, we did an ordinance, the commission did, to boot cars. And, I mean, we took, we recovered hundreds of thousands of dollars through that process, so that was really.
And we did it in phases. So over the next two years, we received quite a significant increase in, in that category.
But getting to, to the city attorney's, uh, part of the budget, uh, it, I always have to explain this because it doesn't appear when you look at the papers. We're contractually, uh, bound with the city. Um, our firm is a, is legal counsel to the city. In fact, this month we'll complete fourteen years and it's been a distinct pleasure to represent the city and the commissions over those years. But when you look at the city attorney expenses, health insurance is not ours or, we have no fringes, no health insurance, no bar dues, no life insurance, no materials and supplies except a municipal core service. Those are all, uh, items that were done, um, like the, the fringes and the health insurance, previous city attorneys, or at least one I can think of.
I can remember that, a no law library, a no secretary, a no computer support, none of that.
Yeah, and we have no office space, no office space. We have two attorneys, they're both here, who primarily do city work. We have a paralegal and we have a legal assistant who support us. And so all of that is part of what we consider our budget. And we have other, eight other lawyers in the firm that we consult with on a as-needed basis, you know. If a particular problem comes up, we're not that familiar with. So that is essentially what happens with our office. It's strictly retainer basis, a monthly retainer with no, no fringes of any kind. But we're not, I'm not saying we're complaining, it's just that's the way, I have to explain this every year because it looks like, uh, we have, uh, health insurance and life insurance and some of these other benefits. So I'm open to questions. We are open to questions. Ask Suzanne the questions.
What is the law core service?
It would say an online municipal law, um, service through McQuillan, which is a legal encyclopedia kind of reference book that we use and the city gets that on a monthly basis.
So when, when we're pulling up the municipal code, um, online and you can do those searches and stuff, is that?
Well, no, uh, we don't use the municipal code, uh, if, if there's a particular topic that we're not familiar with, you know.
If we're looking for a particular contractual language for something that we've not seen before, it provides information and assistance with that, not our actual ordinances and code for the city. We get those the same way you guys work.
A certain person tried to get their time back after see, a public comment, you know, Mike's buddy, would it cost the city or it cost him?
No comment.
Well, if you don't mind, I'm going to add that, you know, I pick on Ron from time to time. But between Ron and Suzanne, uh, I mean, we're working them pretty hard, uh, with all of these land acquisitions, the, uh, the title work and, and everything that goes along with that, um, a lot of contractual things that we're involved in, development agreements, um, you know, the hospital issue was, was one that was very, very large. And, um, without the type of service and the, and the level of service they provide, I think it would have been a very difficult task. So I think it's money well-spent from my perspective.
For what it's worth, I support that a hundred percent.
And, um, noting that there's a fifty thousand dollar fee for the tax tribunal, just, just not that I question that, but again, that, that's another added cost to this significant issue that I hope is also included when we're looking at these costs, that this, this policy is just a constant drain on our city.
Right, and I will tell you, that's an estimate, probably on the high side at one time when, uh, we energies was in the tax tribunal and some other big, uh, companies like that, it, it took up more resources. But, uh, I don't want to say, but there's not a lot going on right now. And we don't have any big box stores in the city, any of those dark store issues, those are all in the township. So they're not doing so well either. And I would also say that Miles Anderson was the, the key expert witness for the, in the Menard, uh, dark store case that went to, I want to say the Supreme Court, went up high anyway. And, uh, he was very instrumental in getting that case reversed, so, you know, we, we've got a great assessor. And I wouldn't, uh, I couldn't leave without saying something nice about, uh, Mike, because he does take a little, fair amount of, he's had meetings. I worked for three city managers in these fourteen years and he's as good as you get, you're going to get. And Gary, of course, you know Gary, he's excellent at everything he does. We're a fortunate city to have people like Gary and, and Mike and, and the rest of our team, so.
Is there any Sarah stuff downstate, helping, sorry, busy stuff, helping with the tax tribunal stuff? Is she working on that or?
You know, there's, uh, the dark, the dark store legislation is, has been, it's just, you know, there isn't apparently a political will to do anything with it, at least right now.
And so looking forward on your budget, um, for next year, are there other, are there any looming legal issues? Marijuana, cough marijuana, um, that you see taking more time or anything?
No, uh, like, uh, Mike said, we're busy all the time. It's amazing. When I first started here, this was like a, a quarter. No, uh, like, uh, Mike said, we're busy all the time. It's amazing, when I first started here, this was like a, a quarter job by one person. Takes two of us to do it. There's, there's much more today than there ever was. I mean, we go, starting the morning till the end of the day, we're working on city, uh, city matters. It just, it's the way it is.
And that's the property issues, it sounds like mostly, is that what-
No, 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 not just property. There's, there's a hundred different issues from every department, whether it's fire department, police department, you, you name it, the-
I just had a conversation with Ron the other day with the fire department. It was a rental, it was a code violation, but it was through my office.
And we have, uh, labor negotiations coming up next year, so there's some more labor contracts that are, that, those are time consuming as well. We're not complaining. We like the work. We like the commission, and, uh, it's an honor to work for the city of Marquette. It's a great city.
I, and I, I guess I'm, I'd be interested in under, no, I mean, I, it's, it's interesting to me that, yeah, this growth and how much of it is, we're proactively taking things on and things that are coming at us. Sort of, again, trying to think about it at a high level, not, um, and could there, I think we have rightly taken on some projects that we needed to take on, but then there's things that come at us. And it sounds like the growth is in both of those things, is what I'm hearing you say.
The world is much more complicated than it was fourteen years ago. Let me tell ya. Sarah knows. Everything, everyone needs a lawyer. Everybody has a lawyer, and everybody wants to talk to the lawyer, and, and, you know, it's, it's, that's just the way it is. And, uh, but that, that's the way, what we have to deal with.
Any questions? Go ahead.
As you, you know, you're paid a, you're paid a, a straight wage here, you're a salaried wage.
A salaried wage. What happens if you get like fifty percent more for a period of time?
It is what it is. It's a retainer. It's not really a salary. It's a retainer, and we, you work within that, and you do the work. We do the work regardless.
So we could load you on and, to your disadvantage.
Oh, they already do that.
You do. You already do. I shouldn't say you do.
But you don't make, you don't, yeah, but we don't reimburse you for that.
No, 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 this is just what it is.
Good for us.
You're not doing it at a loss right now, Dave.
Well, you know, I know they're not being good. Okay, yeah. They're ahead of us.
Don't bet on it. Don't bet on it.
Excuse me? Did you just get a new car?
That's a twenty fifteen.
I'm, I'm driving an O-six, if that matters.
Not exactly rolling in.
What's the Madry gave you the most work?
I'm a great delegator.
I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we'll do a little bit of a time jump here, so we'll jump to page one twenty-one, which is the liability insurance. So this is the city's property and liability insurance, and this is just the general fund portion that we can't easily classify. Believe me, the property and liability insurance is a lot more expensive than eighty-three thousand dollars. But for those costs that we can classify in other areas, like your utility funds and all of those areas, that's where we charge that to, and in this particular department are just the things we can't really classify too easily, so we just put it here. And, uh, Wendy did, uh, go out to bid for the, uh, liability insurance this year, and we're staying with the same carrier, MML. It'd be a slight increase, but I don't remember what it was, but it wasn't very, a very large, uh, increase. And in fact, we're staying with the MML, what they call the property pool. They return excess funding that they don't need, need at the end of the year in the form of a dividend. And this morning, we got, uh, the dividend check from last year, and it was just short of forty thousand dollars. So that's a pretty good deal for us. If you haven't, if you don't have any questions, or are there any questions on property liability? If not, we'll go to, uh, one twenty-four, which is, oh, I'm sorry.
So we're, we're with, do we do any self-insurance?
Uh, we're in a property pool, which, uh, so the MML runs one. There's also another one that's MM RMA, I think is the other one. But we're with MML, and it's just for municipalities like us, and we all share in the cost of the pool. And like I said, the funds that aren't needed at the end of the year are returned to us in the form of, of a dividend. But we are not self-insured at all. Uh, so going to page, uh, one twenty-four, this would be transfers out. Actually, if we'll just go to page one twenty-five, that'd make more sense. So the general fund is responsible for paying the general, the general fund portion of debt. So you'll see a lot of transfers out to debt funds. Now, that's not the entire debt service, because other funds are contributing to the debt, like the water and sewer and stormwater funds in particular. This is just the general fund portion of those debts. This general fund is also responsible for making sure the major street, local street, and Lakeview Arena funds have enough funding to continue operations. Major and local streets are usually all over the place, and, uh, we'll get more into that on the, uh, August twenty-first meeting. Lakeview Arena, that'd be under the John Swinson show. But, uh, of note, that, and John and his staff are working very hard at getting that, uh, transfer to fund their operations as low as possible. In fact, the, uh, one that we're projecting for FY twenty, it will be the lowest it's been in quite some time, if everything comes under budget, so I don't think he's here, but I do congratulate John and his staff for taking it very seriously and trying to attack that, because the less, the less money we have to transfer to, like, Lakeview Arena and the street funds, that's more money we can use in the general fund for all kinds of fun things. Of note, in this, we're no longer making the transfer to the Hartwood Forest Land, and also the, uh, Founder's Landing Fund, Debt Service Fund, which were, those two were completely funded by the general fund, and no other contribution from other funds. Any questions on transfers out? Seeing none, we'll go to, uh, Energy Enhancements, another time jump to, uh, page two twenty-six. This is actually a very new fund. We're implementing, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty. Uh, so that, and if we go to page, well, page two twenty-six explains what it is. So it's, this is really for the JCI. Have, as a governmental en- entity, is government accounting was not designed to accommodate projects like this. So what we decided to do was to, uh, set up an internal service fund. And eventually, once the project is done, uh, we'll have a, what's called a TLP payment, and that's the, the lease purchase program that the state allows us to do, which doesn't account, which doesn't count against our current debt. Each fund that, uh, benefited from the JCI program will make a contribution to this energy enhancement fund, and that will fund the, uh, TLP payment. And then, as far as the savings, each individual fund, if there are savings, they will realize that in their own particular fund. So this is the only way we could, accounting-wise, make it work out. Uh, projects like this are a lot more easier to account for if, you know, if you aren't a governmental entity, but since we are, we, we kinda invented the will on this one, so. So do you have any questions on that one? Like I said, it's a new fund, um, and it's, uh, so, like I said, yes, sir.
Is it working out? Gary?
The JCI program?
Yeah, I mean, we weren't supposed to pay anything.
Well, we, we have to pay, because we took out, I think it was like a twenty-six and a half million dollar loan, so to speak, to pay for this project. But over twenty years, in savings, energy savings and other types of savings, we're supposed to more than recoup that cost. Now, we're in the early portion, so it's not paying for itself just yet. But once it's fully implemented, the projection is that it will. And also, as a reminder, for the first five years, JCI has guaranteed the savings. So, we can also, if we wanna get additional years, we can do that, but we'll have to buy it. We'll look at it at that time. But, so for the first five years, JCI is on the hook for the guaranteed savings.
Just, just to add to that, um, all, uh, first of all, the, the, we don't start counting, it doesn't start counting until the project is substantially complete. And we're about, we're getting there. We're about there now. But all indications are, is that it's working. Uh, just as an example, our energy savings alone at Lakeview Arena for, uh, generating or making ice, uh, the annual, or the monthly savings was between three and five thousand dollars per month difference. We're currently running the two co-generators at the wastewater treatment plant, almost exclusively on methane right now, and generating electricity to run that plant. And, uh, we started doing that about midsummer, so, um, we have yet to recognize the amount we're saving there, but we're, we're, uh, we're minimally using electricity from, from the grid.
I will say, for that one, uh, the most recent bill we got, it's about a quarter of what we were normally paying. So the electricity bill's gone from roughly twenty thousand dollars per month, to the latest month was five thousand a month. Yes. BLP has let it, let it be known, they aren't too happy with this.
Yes, yeah, so the, the stuff that, the energy things we spent on is working for Lakeview then, helping out and, you know, if you have, if you need help with water, you can play with the meth stuff, I mean, Blake probably knows people that could help you out with that stuff too.
Um, yeah, it'd be great to hear a presentation this weekend.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have better numbers as, as we start to really, everything starts functioning, and, and, uh, the, the returns start, start to happen, so, um, I'm, I get a bi, bi-monthly report from, uh, JCI, and everything is, is really looking like we hoped it would, so.
This is something we should bring up at a meeting, so people know that this program is working.
We, we just did. Yeah, no, I agree, and, uh, uh, the, JCI is going to be giving an update to the, uh, uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant Board. Is that what they're called?
Yeah, Market Area Wastewater Treatment.
Market Area Wastewater, uh, Board, uh, either this month or next month. But I think we can put something together, I think, for the commission, uh, on a meeting as well, so that's a good, good idea.
Okay, so, uh, going on to the next one will be the debt service. Probably the easiest way to look at is to go to page fourteen. So I apologize for all the jumping around, but this is about the best way we can show all of this. So this first page is all the city's debt that we're responsible for. Now, this doesn't include, like, the BLP debt or the DDA debt. This is city debt and also brownfield debt. And so as you'll notice, the page is pretty full, and this is after-
Did you say this is the easiest way to look at this?
Yeah.
This is the way we planned it, so you can't really figure it out.
So, the, what I'm trying to say is, there's no room to add debt, so we're, so. But we did take out the two that, we haven't officially paid those off yet, that will take place early September. Uh, September fifth is the target date, but we did take out the Hartwood Forest Land and also the Founder's Landing. And then if you look at the next two pages, it's a little bit easier to read. These are the ones that, uh, so on page fifteen, those are mostly the ones that are, that the general fund is on the hook for. Now, in each one of these, there's also a utility component. But if for whatever reason the utility revenues weren't there, the general fund is on the hook to pay for these. And then the, uh, next page, page sixteen, these shows the non-general fund ones. So the general fund doesn't have, have any contribution to these, but these are the library, the brownfield, and also the utilities, which are considered revenue bonds. And those are the SRF and DWRF programs. And I wanna mention that, because it's, those two are very good programs. SRF is for the sewer, DWRF is for the water. And, uh, Kurt's done a tremendous job in trying to get city money. It's, uh, at a significantly lower interest rate than what I could obtain if we weren't doing it through these programs. And Kurt is also submitting our future CIP to the state. And, uh, right now, it's in the evaluation stages, so we aren't quite sure if, if we'll make it for the next round of funding, but at least we're attempting to do that. And that will save money in those utilities, which will hopefully take some of the pressure off for some of the rate increases in the future as well, too.
Just waiting for Gary, but he's focused. Gary, I'm looking at last year's numbers for the non-general funds. Why do we owe more this year than we did last year?
Uh, we've added on more debt.
What did we add in this non-general?
For the non-general fund?
Cause I'm looking at the years at the top. I don't see any for nineteen.
Yeah, it's probably, are you looking at the year-to-year total?
No, I'm looking at last year's book.
Okay.
Fifty-eight, seven twenty-two, six sixty-nine.
I don't have last year's book, so I couldn't tell you right offhand, so I, I would have to look at it.
I just don't understand why we owe more than we did last year.
Go over and slap him now.
Do you want my book, Gary?
Yeah, if you want me to look at it now, I'll be glad. Or if you want me to get back to you, so we can keep going, cause we do have quite a bit more to go.
Thanks.
Yeah, we have added some brownfield stuff.
Yeah, we did have to complete the Collin Avenue, which was brownfield and Baraga this year.
Yeah, so Baraga was on here last year, but McClellan was not. That's probably about the only difference that I can see. So last year, we were reporting... So everything is down from last year. Last year, we had total debt to sixty-six million, just a tad over sixty-six million. Now it's down to just a tad under sixty-four million. And that would include paying off the two, the two thousand and nineteen principal, and we also added in the McClellan Avenue.
So I was looking at the wrong line item, admittedly. I was looking at the last original issue amount, not-
Yeah, so everything is according to, so we aren't trying to pull the wool over your eyes, it's just-
So what about that McClellan-Brownfield that says twenty eighteen, and or this year, but it wasn't on the last year's?
That was because at the time, we did the debt service schedule, it hadn't been issued, but it's considered a eighteen.
Okay, I was just confused with the years too. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions regarding debt service?
So the question, I think I heard you say once, we, or when the auditor spoke, we were at ninety-four, ninety-five percent of where we wanted to.
That's not entirely accurate. Um, we have to con, we have to calculate the debt serv, the debt margin two different ways, one in the CAFR, and then the one we consider the official version. I have to do a continuing disclosure filing each year, and that's the more official one. I don't remember the percentage, but it was, it's probably more like eighty percent. It's still high, but half of that debt is related- It's still high, but half of that debt is related to the brownfield activities, and we consider that an investment, that, yeah, the general fund won't reap the benefits for a few years, but once it does, we think it's gonna play a big part. And unfortunately, I know I won't be here when that happens, but, and I tell everybody, I wish I could be the finance person here in twenty years, cause it's gonna be a completely different story. Who knows what happened between now and then, but at least the way it's projected now, in twenty years, when those brownfields start pumping money directly into the general fund, then it'd be a completely different story for the city, but for now, this is what we have, so.
So, I'll, I'll repeat something I've heard me say before, but I think it would be great to be able to tell that story in a page or two, so that that can be explained to the public of how we're managing this. Um, and I think that's a, that would be a worthwhile investment of someone's time, or if we have to hire someone, or the brownfield authority does that, I really would, I would like to ask that we find that, that their resources be found to, to tell that story, um, so that it can be understood how the money's moving around, because there's a lot of concern about that in the community, um.
And actually, too, it's really kind of a misstatement to say the general fund has to wait twenty years or X number of years, because really, the goal with the brownfield is what I call the peripheral properties, to see investment in that, and we're actually seeing that. So, those are properties that the general fund is benefiting from. That money doesn't go to the brownfield, and as you spruce up a brownfield property, you'll see the areas around that property also spruce up. So, that's really kind of the goal, and we are seeing that happen, so.
I would concur, I do concur with, uh, with Commissioner Hill strongly about the brownfields, because it's a story we don't tell, and we don't tell it well. We don't tell it at all. And not only the core of the story, which would be the ultimate faucet of money potentially coming to the general fund, but also for the oil drop effect that occurs around those structures that are being built or, or the facilities, and where we see tax increases from them, that we could tie notionally to the brownfield. Now, I understand that that's an awful lot of projection, and there's an awful lot of, of good things that have to happen along the way, but we, we really hide that under a basket. And people notice a brownfield, and they know we've got a heavy debt load on it, but they don't understand what's happening from that. And while it's gonna happen in two decades or ten decades, whenever, but they don't see that, and we have to be able to do that.
I, I know that there are a couple of videos out there, but I don't know that they actually address the financial.
They don't, I mean, they're all pretty picture stuff, before and after, and that's nice, and that's good, we understand that. But, we, we need to see the money potentiality of what that will give to the city and our citizens.
Well, fortunately for us, tonight, our representative of the brownfield is sitting behind me, I think. Yep, she's, she's still there. And, uh, there's a meeting coming up, and, and maybe that's something we can work together with the brownfield board to put together some type of informational method. Now, I, I know I'll get the story out, and I know we've talked about this before, but, um, we try hard to get our story out all the time. It's either we're not very good at it, or people aren't that interested in it. So, we'll, we'll certainly discuss internally on how to, how to do that.
I can show you some examples, some folks I worked with in, in Massachusetts and Maine, where I think I could offer you some maybe templates to work off of.
Sure, that would be great. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, with, you know, with the hospital going up, down there, so that whole area, you know, little strip from Baraga, is always gonna be redone eventually sometime. And then, with, you know, Founder's Landing, just now, Salt Market's starting to come back to life too, so, again, you know, brownfield is a cost, obviously, cost to your fund, but then, all the other stuff around it can make up for it, you know? So, I think it's, and Gary, if you could be a consultant, that we could contact when you're in your retirement home, be great, you know, so. If Mike's still around too, you know?
Moving on.
Okay, thank you. No further questions on that. Concludes the central administration, so now, we'll get into administrative services, which is Susan's area. And we'll start on page sixty, which is city clerk.
Six zero.
Six zero, yes.
Under city clerk, I guess, oh, cause, yeah, cause Chris moved up. You targeted L U Chris. It's all your fault, Chris.
The IT person right there. Someone's got to keep track of the mic, you know? You get paranoid all the time.
Okay, so, good afternoon. Um, I'll start with the city clerk budget, two-one-five. The clerk is not really a revenue generating source. Our biggest income are from business licenses and permits, off-leash area licenses, that sort of thing. We're projecting just a small increase due to, um, we've seen an uptick in business licenses coming in the city. Authorized positions, myself, my deputy, um, city clerk and administrative assistant, we're all on our fifth year, um, in the office, which is amazing, because we changed it to, from a three position to a, from a two position to a three position, um, office, and it's working out very well, so we're all capped at no more step levels. Program statistics, pretty much standard. We saw a little bit, um, of a decrease in recording deeds and easements, because we didn't buy as much property as we did in the past years. It's the only thing that's really significant, um, or anything to note in this stat sheet. Under the fee schedule, um, a couple of things to note is, we're going to do an ordinance to remove the taxi cab company and related drivers, um, due to PA three forty-five in two thousand and sixteen, which took effect in March of seventeen. Um, the state took it over, and we just didn't want to get rid of it right away, to see what the state was gonna do, if they were gonna keep licensing the taxi driver and companies or what, but at this late date, it's time to remove it. Um, we're also going to remove the theater, um, by ordinance again, because we just haven't and don't foresee any new theaters in the city that will be having to be licensed.
Does the Uber thing affect the, the taxi driver thing? Does that, does that, do they have to get a license to be Uber, or is that just covered under their own thing, or?
It's, uh, if they charge a fee, it's the same thing as a taxi driver, so the state maintains all of that.
So, if it's, so, even if it's Uber or whatever, whatever rideshare, they have to still count as a taxi service, doesn't matter what, what, what it is, you can't just do it free, gotcha?
Uh-huh. Um, other than that, just mobile food vending non-compliance fee, we're hoping not to collect any, but it, we put it out there, just like the, um, non-compliance fees for business licenses. It has seemed to help us collect these licenses a little bit more efficiently. We're not tracking people down for months. And other than that, that's pretty much standard. We are, um, under eight oh one, professional and contractual. We've seen quite a bit of jumping around in codifying our ordinances.
Okay, should we have?
Sixty-two? Sixty-two, sorry.
There it is.
There it is. Um, so, seven-two-seven office supplies, that's just a standard. Eight oh one, professional contractual is something that we, um, look at over the years. So, every ordinance that we adopt gets codified each April, the following April. Depending on how many ordinances we do and how involved they are, is how we're charged. So, in two thousand and eighteen, we paid just a thousand sixty-one dollars. Two thousand and nineteen, thirty-three hundred dollars. So, we were really busy with ordinances during the last year. Eight-six-five conferences, continuing education for myself and the deputy, printing and publishing. Again, we're kind of bound by our local newspaper, and how many ordinances we print, how many meetings we have, is all factored in. Um, I would really like to see this go to computerized at some point, but that's a charter change. Um, that's pretty much it for the clerk. If you have any questions?
With, that's a good, Chris, I mean, you think with papers and things, they, they print everything, but, you know, you could submit to them via email or something like that, and say, here's our list, you know, we're working on that eventually, but here's our list, and just give them all the information via email or something, save you from printing all the paper off or something like that, might be easier for you, you know?
Be nice someday.
Be nice with Mike, maybe when Gary takes over, he'll save some money and do it like that.
Um, I'll move on to elections, page sixty-nine. So, under revenue applicable, um, in two thousand and twenty, we will see some reimbursement. That's usually the only time we see reimbursement, is in a presidential election year. Um, we are reimbursed for the presidential primary. The parties actually pay and reimburse us for holding that election. Authorized positions, um, we hire quite a few election inspectors for each of those precincts. We have two co-chairs. We also have a counting board that has, um, proven very beneficial, so all of our absentee ballots that were previously counted in the precincts are now counted by a separate sequestered board. And with the increase of no reason absentee with Prop Three and registration right up to and on election day, it's increased our, um, office traffic. So, that's been a big help. One change that we did make, um, in looking at past budgets and in light of this, um, unemployment season, it was increasingly hard to find somebody that wanted to work from mid-June to the day after the election, come back in November, work the same kind of schedule, and then, the following year, train them all over again with all the new updates. We were able to change a classification and retain a full-time, part-time, so it's consistent. We have somebody that is in-house all the time, can maintain all the changes. We're not training twice a year or more. So, that has proven beneficial, and it's saved the city about five grand a year. Program stats, uh, registered voters, checked the numbers today. We projected thirteen-seven-oh-one. Today's, um, numbers were thirteen-seven-thirty-nine, so we're right in the ballpark. Our election turnout this past, uh, this month was at twenty-point-seven percent, which was, um, kind of low for what we expected, but I'm sure we'll see, um, an increase in November. Any questions on those?
When you do elections like at the Y, do they, you know, obviously, the city, probably the city owns the Y building, but you, and obviously, elections, do you have to pay, like, they charge you like a fee to vote there, when you have, you know, is it like a little simple fee you have to pay to have, have people walk in there and vote or whatever?
We have an agreement with the Y. They actually owed us some, some money. We are charged a thousand dollars an election to use their gym for voting.
Gotcha.
Because they did owe us some money, and then they went through a bankruptcy, that we have a, uh, every time we rent the gym, we take a thousand dollars off that bill.
Oh, gotcha.
Until it comes down to zero. So, right now, we're not actually paying them.
Obviously, you're basically.
But, we will eventually.
Obviously, paying Gary back, basically.
Um, on, with the concerns about the election and the machines, um, safety, um, that are broadly in the news, no, no, casting no sense of what's going on here, but out of that concern, um, would there, um, are there resources you feel like you need? I, I, I really would like to be able to, to say to people, yeah, you know, we are doing the most we can to make sure our elections are, are fair and, uh, secure. Or is there, I, it seems like things are very flat, and I, um, so where are we on that, do you think?
We're pretty much up to speed. The things we do in the city and the things we do in the state of Michigan are actually stellar. There are so many checks and balances. People don't realize that when the polls close at eight o'clock, you can't just flip a switch and send numbers. It's a matter of a checks and balances process, making sure everything balances. From there, it goes to a receiving board, which is like a pre-canvas before it goes to the county to get released. So, we have staff that's absolutely trained in doing that. We make sure numbers are good to go, and it, and it's all an entire process.
And, and that's very good to hear, and thank you. I just wanted to have that be, give you a chance to say that, um, cause I, it's something to be proud of. And, um, and then, particularly looking forward to twenty-twenty and this presidential election, and, um, that is actually, the, the November twenty-twenty is actually the next budget year, right?
Yes.
So, this would only, only the primary is considered in this right now.
Right.
And we will be reimbursed for that expense.
Right, we'll have, so March tenth is the presidential primary, August is the regular primary, and then, um, November is presidential.
And, again, if there's anything that you would need to make sure that that goes quickly, um, and, and that you have the time and resources that you need, um, it, uh, to make sure that we can do a good job.
I appreciate that. Um, we'll keep that in mind. We're constantly recruiting for, um, election workers. As long as you're registered in the city of Marquette, excuse me, in the state, you can work in the city of Marquette. They broadened that a few years ago, it used to be only the county. So, I'm constantly looking for workers.
And when, when would they need to be in for training, knowing that we have August and November mostly?
We hold an election school the week, the Tuesday, usually the Tuesday before the election, so that everything's fresh on their minds, and we do their updates. So, definitely get the word out there. Send them to the clerk's office. Um, I'll go on to expenditures, if we're all good. So, one of our, um, changes we made this year was to break out postage, um, from our regular operating supplies. Uh, we added two-six-two, seven-two-eight. Mainly, um, it's a good accounting item, because it was hard to break out postage to get reimbursed during an election, so, um, Gary's staff has been really helpful in helping us organize this. Our, um, seven-forty operating supplies is always high. Um, for example, with Prop Three, there are so many changes that were made. All the, um, related paperwork and forms in the state had to be reworked, redone, reworded, and reordered, and it's not even available till September first. So, um, an example is the absentee ballots that you see, the outside mailing envelope and the inside, now they're going to be two different colors, so that it's easier for people to tell it's not a publisher's clearinghouse envelope.
Yes.
So, um, but, we're only allowed to use up our stock, and we make sure that we are well-stocked. What we have, we can only use through November, and then it's toss it out. So, we're not real happy about that, but it is what it is. Other than, um...
Quick question on that, Chris?
Yes.
There was a pretty solid drive at the fair this past weekend, um, from the parties to sign people up. There was a pretty solid drive at the fair this past weekend from the parties to sign people up. Is there any reason that you might run short if all of a sudden, I mean, if all of a sudden you get this, tell you, you have people that, you know, do the absentee?
No, we can, we can gauge things pretty well. And I always have a Plan B. I know who to borrow from if I get into it.
Right on. Okay.
Clerks are pretty good about sharing.
Good deal. Thank you.
So, the only other thing of note is professional contractual. We pay to have our program cards, our tabulators programmed by the vendor who actually supplies our ballots. And that is worth its weight in gold. They're tested, retested, not released until everything is up to speed. So, we actually went with the same vendor that we got the tabulators from because he continued that service. And that was huge for us. It's very time-consuming if you have to do it in-house.
So, basically, whatever machines are used, you use, they have their, they give you the paperwork to do it, basically. If you buy Pepsi machine, they give you Pepsi, basically, is what it is. So, basically, they give you your own forms and that's what they use to scan everything, gotcha.
Yeah, it's, that, the gentleman that does that is, it's, it's worth every penny.
And Gary can call pretty good, too, but.
With that, I'm pretty much done. If there are any questions, it's steady as she goes.
Thank you.
Next up is the human resources budget on page seventy-five. The revenues that make up for the human resources budget are pretty limited. We do have the fixed charges. I provide services to both Public Library and Housing Commission. We do their payroll. We do their benefit administration as well. Reimbursements comes from, it's a negligible amount. It can be anything. Sometimes our four-fifty-seven plan, they do a legal settlement and they have to pay everybody like five cents. And rather than credit that back to everyone, it just goes into reimbursements for administrative charges. The fees are Cobra fees, so if someone leaves our health plan or loses their health insurance and they go on Cobra, we by law receive two percent administrative fees. And that is what, and, and it's hard to predict. I have no idea who's going to go on Cobra. There could be years where no one goes on it and someone, you will have five or six people on it, so it's just a guess. There are three positions. Myself is the director, the payroll clerk, and our human resource benefits coordinator. And then for program statistics, mine's always difficult to do an estimate for FY twenty because a lot of the plans and expenses, I don't get the information till after I have to put this together. So, several items in the FY twenty, for example, we have two new positions, so it would, that would go up to hundred-and-seventy-six. The health insurance, we did get in the caps this year, which I wasn't anticipating. So, that number is actually going to be close to three million, three-sixty-six for two thousand twenty. For retirees only, since we got the Medicare Advantage rates in, I'm estimating that will actually be three-twenty-eight, oh-sixty-seven, so that'll go down a little bit. At the time this was put together, we also didn't have the actuarial valuation for the Fire Police Pension Fund. That did come in afterwards. And if I add also the pension costs for one of the new employees, the cost is coming in about one million, eight-oh-four, nine-sixty-one. The next page shows the fees. Again, the only fee that we recharge is for the Cobra and that it's a two percent of the premium for health insurance. If someone also goes on a disability Cobra continuation, that goes up to fifty percent, but we've never had that as far as, as long as I've been here, but that is a possibility. I don't really budget or expect any revenues from that. If we get it, it's just gravy. On page seventy-seven is the expenditures. And most of it is, we're, we're labor, so it's salaries and fringe benefits is the majority of my budget, but I do want to point out a line item, one-oh-one, two-seventy. It's performance pay. And in that, there this year is twenty-five thousand dollars. This is a fund for potential merit bonuses for various management employees at the city manager's discretion. We have done this a few times in the past. There were no funds budgeted for it last year, but this year, we are putting in the twenty-five thousand. Another item of note is professional contractual. This, main part of this budget includes money set aside for arbitration. If we have a labor dispute that can't be resolved at the grievance process, then it goes through to an arbitration. And lately, the costs of arbitrators, their travel time and their time to write up a decision has increased a lot. So, we put enough money in there to cover it. There are some contracts that if you lose the arbitration, you pay both the union's costs and the city's costs. So, this is, this is a generous estimate in case we need to use it, but hopefully we won't. The other item that increased this year was local training managerial. The city budgets the annual NMSA fee for the city to belong to the NMSA. That's the Northern Michigan Public Service Academy. And this year in May, NMSA did increase their fees to municipalities, so that went up to two thousand dollars for the city of Marquette. And in that, I also budget by, by union contract for up to five city hall employees to attend a management labor conference once a year. Physical and drug screenings, we do that for new hires that are full-time or part-time. We don't do it for seasonals. So, it's based about the anticipated amount of turnover between retirements, resignations, that type of thing. So, we also have to budget in there for psychological evaluations for police and fire. That's required as part of the-
For the drug screening, do they have that done, I know for, with DLT and stuff like that, we have done at the basement of the medical center. Is that, does somebody else do it for you or, I know for DLT?
Occupational medicine does it for us, yeah.
So, it's basically the same as medical vote, DLT, they-
And then they mail the results in to a third party.
And they tell the results, and I've asked for this. If we always tell somebody's guilty, they ask right away.
Other than that, there's really no other changes? There, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll hear from IT.
I'm sorry? We did. They're secret, though.
All right. Page one-forty-eight, the program statistics. For the, yeah, we have two accounts in IT. The first one is the PEG, which is the Public Education and Government Access Channel. We get funding through Charter, which is mandated by the state. We get funding to, to provide- A franchise agreement to provide, to provide the recordings on channel one, PEG channel one-ninety-one. So, this is the programming that we're running. You'll notice that the programming, really, the percentages haven't changed in the last couple of years, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. It should, there should be some new programming on there and it should be up kept a little better than it has been. Frankly, that we just, it's a priority, but it's not our highest priority. We, this is one that needs some more attention and maintenance. It used to be the responsibility of our IT specialist one. We, we, we haven't had one for about six years and so it's been put on the IT specialist two and he's busy keeping the city running. So, we haven't forgot about it. We want to kind of update. We try to keep that programming updated, but we haven't changed the percentages of what we're showing currently. But as part of that, we are rebroadcasting the commission meetings, the budget hearings, and then any other government activity that's going on.
Does anyone work with like, you know, wherever you go, Mackinac or any of those places, wherever you go, they have, or Door County, they have a little TV. They show you all the, all the, it's really like, work with Travel Market, have them do a little video to show like, here's us doing Market or whatever, or?
Yeah, we've had some great videos on there. It's just after a couple of years, they get stale. It's hard to get new content. You need to constantly be looking for and getting new content, and then we have to be careful what we put up, too. It has to pertain to the, to the city, but not be, you know, we can't go out and get advertising, things like that. So, you have to find appropriate, interesting content. We've had some really good content from, from the County Road Commission where, you know, they'll talk about plowing and, and different, you know, different safety commercials. We've had some good commercials for the city of Marquette, talking about the downtown waterfront, some of the things going on. Those are a few years old now and we need to, we need to find time and resources to, time and energy.
And maybe work with LSP or Market, somebody that does this, you know, Travel Market does everything for, they like to advertise, so. I mean, would be, but you could say, here, go with some good Market videos, might be his, you know, all the festivals, you know, just something to show people how great Market is or something like that. You know, say, okay, leave out the waterfalls up in Big Bay, but just kind of focus on around Gary's house or something like that, you know?
Also, we've offered in the past, and I'll just put it out there again, anytime there's items that are important for the public to know about, we have the recording equipment here. We'd be happy to record the mayor, record a commissioner, record the city manager, speaking to any issues that would be interesting to the public, and we could rebroadcast those as well. So, we have that available to us if there's a desire to do that. We'd be happy to-
Todd, have you talked with Travel Marquette?
I'm sorry?
Have you talked with Travel Marquette about video material?
I have not.
You should. I think they have a great deal they can give you.
We did have the large, a couple of years ago, they came out with a video with the, the bikes, the large fat tire bikes, and they were riding on the snow and through the ice. And, and it showed a great video of Marquette and the trails. It was fantastic and we, we've shown that. We, we'd be very interested in more video like that.
Well, I would just give them a call, see if they have anything more because they, they have a contract for a lot of it.
Like Fred, you know, go Fred or I on the boat and take video around the harbor or something like that, show how great Market looks up in the water or something like that. Not being, but, you know, my dad's already leaving, but, I mean, just something that you could put out there. I'd agree with Fred, Travel Market, be a good person, just talk to him and say, what kind of video you guys got or help you out and, you know, maybe Mike or Gary can film for you or something like that.
I think the last time we did a city of Marquette video, it's, it's probably been six years, seven years, but it was, it had to do with the, the waterfront activities, putting up the flags, the safety systems, and, and that was a very good video. It, it explained a lot to the community what we were trying to accomplish and why, and I, I would love to have more content like that.
That's a great idea. You can go with Ian sitting back there. I mean, like, I've had people see us enclose things like the park and roads just for fun, but when bad weather happens, you know, respect the lake and just, you know, say, here's why we have flags and I agree with you, like, here's some of the dangers of, you know, the water or winter or whatever, so it's a good idea.
And we do have those safety videos out there, but they, they do tend to get stale. People have seen them, and so we'd like to, like to get new, new video.
So, as someone who doesn't own a television, or, well, I barely own a television and I don't pay for cable, the streaming is how I get from, are you going to address that? Is that, I, I understand this is a mandated system, but is this the place to talk about streaming or is that something?
I'd be happy to talk about. Are you talking about the commission meetings and YouTube? Is that?
Yeah.
So, I don't know how many people realize, but at the last commission meeting, the, the video didn't stream on YouTube. And you, you probably, commissioners probably got comments from that. So, we use YouTube. It's, it's a great resource because, quite frankly, it's free to us. We don't pay for that. And we've been using it for a few, several years now and it's worked out really well. And then after the meeting streams, we put that, we actually do some editing to clean it up so it doesn't have all the pre-meeting, post-meeting things. We clean it up the next day and put it out there so that, so residents can just view the meeting. And that, that takes a little time, so by Tuesday afternoon, that's up and ready for people, cleaned up on YouTube. What happened la, last Monday night was simply a YouTube issue. The streaming wasn't working. It had nothing to do with the city of Marquette. There was nothing that we could have done. Now, there is an issue with the, the audio on it and that was our issue. We have the audio. We had some issues with equipment. We didn't know until after the meeting, so the audio was kind of echoing. That's been corrected, but that is an issue we had this week with this equipment, which will be replaced in another month.
Yeah, I was wondering, I was coming back from Green Bay. I tried to turn the video on to see what's going on and like, it's not working. Something with the tape hammers are bad. Is there a way to stream that over the website maybe or something? Or, I mean, YouTube is a great thing, but maybe is there a way, if YouTube's down, maybe stream it over the website or something, because maybe we'll go on Market and say, okay, YouTube or Market, is that an option or?
Well, we used to have, I think it's still down in the tech room. We, we have a web streaming service. It's a, it's a physical box. So, we got as a beta unit, I'm going to say nine years ago, eight, nine years ago, and we tried to use that for a while. We never fully implemented it. Now, because YouTube works so well, I mean, realistically, YouTube, we, it's gone down on us twice in the last three years. It's worked extremely well and it doesn't cost the city anything.
So, is there any way, if it doesn't, if it is, if there is an issue and it doesn't record, it's a loss of access, particularly as people are moving away from cable. So, is there a way to have a backup that would not, I don't want to-
Well, yeah, that's a, I'm grateful for that question because there is, and typically, because it didn't stream doesn't mean we didn't have it recorded. And the next day, we would have it up. In fact, we did put it up the next day. The problem was, we also had an internal audio issue. And so, unfortunately, this meeting, we can put it up, but the audio keeps echoing and so it's very difficult to listen to. So, that's kind of a one-off. That's, and so, do you want to, do you want to invest, you know, a lot of money into a video streamer when, again, in probably three years, we've had two glitches with, with YouTube, with the non-streaming. And any other week, we could have put it up. The next day, it'd have been fine. We did have an audio issue with this antiquated equipment. I mean, we all are aware that this equipment needs to be replaced and, and will be next month.
Maybe a little webcam up there in the back TV and just shoot her a Facebook or something like that, you know? You know, some of the younger people in your IT department are, could probably say, oh, just Facebook Live it or something like that, you know?
Are there any other technologies that you see coming down the pike to, to have that level of access? Or do you see sticking with YouTube, which I think is fundamental? Who owns YouTube? Google? Google?
Yeah. Well, you know, we, we could. I mean, there, there are companies out there and I can think of one specifically. We, our, our video server, the, the server that we use to stream the video, to record and, and stream it on to, or play it back on Charter, or broadcast, sorry, broadcast live on Charter and replay it, rebroadcast it later. It's, it's been a great company for us and they, they have equipment that we could purchase to do our own web streaming internally. Now, there's going to be a cost to that. There's going to be an employee cost to, to manage that and maintain it. So, right now, I see YouTube, YouTube is the best option for us, but if the commission's interested in looking at some kind of backup service or something internal, I'd certainly look at it and get your numbers.
It's interesting, you mean, maybe even have somebody to look over and say, okay, it's not working right, put out a PSA or something like that, you know, something on the website or Facebook to say, it's not working. Let everybody know it's and why it's not working or something like that.
I guess, I guess we could put it on the website, because a lot of people go to the website to start the stream. A lot of people just go to YouTube to start it.
You could, or something, that, that Facebook or something that says, okay, city website, city streaming service not working right now.
I'd say we could put it on one-ninety-one, too.
You know?
But the problem with putting on one-ninety-one is the people that are trying to use the service probably aren't looking at the TV. But, but it's potential. We could put it up on the website. Problem is, and I'm not trying to make excuses, but just for, just to be realistic, we have one technician here at night taping those commission meetings and he's busy taping the commission meeting. It's hard for him to, to then go, he can check the stream and he knew that YouTube wasn't working, but then to, to log in and go in and put up messages is really challenging for one guy that's taping a meeting.
Maybe send a message to yours, that somebody can say, just listeners, like, post it and say, okay, not work, city website, like, I mean, Mike's office just PSAs all the time to say, okay- to say, okay, city stream's not working tonight, check back tomorrow, or something like that.
It's a good idea, Commissioner, I'll, I'll talk to my staff, and we'll come up with a plan to do that in the future, I think that's a good idea.
Let's try to keep what we do within the boundaries of what we can do, and do it efficiently.
Okay. Good idea. We'll, we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll get something up if it, if the streaming goes down. At least on the website.
Next item?
Okay. Page 148. Basically, our, I'm sorry?
149?
Oh, 149, sorry. We're on 149. The budget here is very simple. We're, we're estimating about $23,200 of revenue from the franchise fee. With the new equipment that we've, we've purchased, that, that money's basically been expended, and so as that money comes in, it's reimbursing the, the money that we've spent on the, the video system. Unless there's anything major that occurs during the year, we, we'd probably have to look at some reserves, but otherwise, I think the budget's gonna basically provide for itself. It's going to be self-maintaining. The money will come in and go out, but we'll have everything that we need to run the new system. I don't know if there's any questions on that?
Seeing none.
Page 219. We have three employees in the IT department. We do, we do auction quite a bit of equipment each year. Most, well, we, we have a combination. Equipment, older equipment that we've purchased, we auction. We also tend to lease a lot, when it seems fiscally sound to lease, we'll, we'll do that instead. And so often, we'll be returning the equipment, but when we have antiquated equipment that we replace, we, we, we have to auction it. We do have companies that call us frequently and want to purchase our, our old phones, or old equipment, and, and I think by the charter, we have to, we have to auction equipment, just to make it fair for everybody. We can go out and sell to the individual. So, we do a lot of auctioning, auctioning for other departments when appropriate. The help desk calls haven't really changed dramatically. We, three guys, we all, or three employees, we all take our turns trying to get the help desk tickets closed. We, we each have our own niche, but we, we pretty much cover each other and try to stay on top of things. I think we've done a good job of getting tickets closed and responding as quickly as we can. We don't get too many complaints. I won't say we never get complaints about not being fast enough. We don't get too many complaints, so. I don't know if there are any questions on that?
I get them.
Mike gets the complaints. If I, if I get an email that complains, I forward it to Mike. Page, if there are no questions, page 220. We, we collect fees from the property lookup for BSNA. And then, we have a fee structure for video recording, if somebody wants to use the commission chambers. We have fees set up. It's been a few years since anybody has, has asked us to record for them. This is independent, this would be a recording fee, it's independent of any charges or fees that, that the city would charge for the use of the chambers. So, we, we haven't in the last few years been asked to record for anyone. So, page 221. I think this is, our budget this year really hasn't changed from last year. Looks like it has, this was 280, 283, it was 233. What's the 83?
833.
Eight, or 833 last year. Yeah. Let me look at mine, I'll pull my budget up. Oh, it is 833. The budget has gone up slightly this year, mostly due to software costs, I think, increased annually, typically they, they increase. And then also, our communications budget seems to go up each year, although our cellular technology, there's more demand every year, and that grows. Each department has more activities that can benefit, not just by cell phones, but by other devices that need cellular service, including the tablets. And we've had some, we have some large projects ongoing between water, wastewater, and the municipal service center. But having said that, this year, Verizon lowered their fees, so even though our communications demand has gone up, some of the cost is actually, per device has come down, which has been helpful. I think that's probably due to more competition, moving into the area, one of the other competitors putting up more towers. I'm just, I'm speculating, but, but we've got a really good price reduction this year from, from them. So, I really don't have any, any other comments unless I have questions.
Maybe you could do a little tour of Kurt's place. Okay, here's what happens if you flush, it goes all the way through, and take a tour. Have you guys, you guys like filming, so you could film all around Kurt's office, and, you know, say, here's where, this is where it goes after this, and, you know?
I have had residents ask me about 5G, their, their concerns. Any statement you want to make about 5G at this time?
At this time? Nope. No, not, not really. I mean, it's not here yet. They're working on it. The technology will change, will go to 5G eventually.
Any sort of timeframe, do you think?
I, I don't. I, I, I know the companies are working on it, I know they're talking about providing it, but, but I don't, I don't have any inside knowledge. The last thing I guess I would add, as far as since cameras were brought up, just a handful of years ago, we had about eight, eight cameras in City Hall, and then we started putting up cameras downtown. So, I did add money to the budget for, for maintenance, maintenance and repair on cameras, because we're, we're at about 45 cameras now, and I expect to have 50 by the end of the year. I don't know how many by the end of next year, but between the city buildings, and then between the DDA, and the police department putting up cameras on the intersections, we'll, we'll just keep expanding. So, I did add money to the budget to be able to maintain those cameras.
And that includes facial recognition?
As soon as we get 5G.
We'll leave that alone.
Okay.
What do we actually use the videos for? Like, is it just for like, identifying things?
It's security.
Yeah, they're just security videos. They keep an eye on just the downtown area or the commons area. They're not for traffic citations or anything like that. They're just a, a high-traffic, both pedestrian and vehicle, kind of monitoring, that's all. And they're high up on a pole, and it's-
I know, I saw them, I got yelled at by my husband.
Any questions?
Not? Thank you, Todd.
Appreciate it.
Just before Todd goes, Todd took over this job. How long you been at it now, Todd? Todd, just your second? One year. One year. He's, he's done a fantastic job. Took over when the last person retired, and really pays attention and is knowledgeable, and he's done a wonderful job, so thanks.
Thank you.
Well, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan, Chris, and Todd. That's the end of the administrative part. Now, we'll ask Fire Chief Ian to present the fire budget. And we'll start on page 88.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I have three budgets under my purview. I'll start with the fire budget on page 88. On this one, you have the function. First thing really to note is the revenue. First line under FEMA grants, that $180,000, I'll get into that a little bit more in the fire budget, but that is a 90% AFG grant for radios. All but one of our radios is obsolete, and we can't get parts for them anymore. So, instead of using the general fund, we're going to be putting in for a AFG grant to replace 30 radios this year. The match will, is about, it's 10%, it'll be about $20,000. And again, that's in the, the fire budget. Authorized positions are below that. Are there any other questions? I'll move on to program stats.
About the, you know, on the 911 committee, they got that all, it's smart 911 stuff, it's all, I know you guys, you and Blake's office get all the fancy equipment, is that part of your updates, get, in your fire, just get the little, all the, you know, smart 911 comes out, has everything in there, so if you guys go to a fire or something like that, I know Blake's guys, they can, the computer brings up everything about the person. Do you guys have that access, too, or what?
Yeah, we're working right now with the tablets on our trucks with central dispatch to get computers, computer-assisted dispatch. That actually should be live by next week.
Yeah, Gary was talking about that, so, okay.
Yeah, we're just starting training on that next week. And so, we should have that. Basically, instead of just the page coming in, and us listening to the, to the dispatch information, it'll come up directly on our computers, tell us where we're going. Then we can open up maps, overview, like satellite maps of the area, we have GIS overlays for water supply hazardous materials, all our pre-planning stuff. So, our incident commander will have all that information on the way to the incident.
Younger generation could probably help with that, you know?
Ian, what's the life expectancy of those radios that you're going to buy?
I'm sorry, the-
The life usefulness?
Um, I was kind of, I'm sorry?
Say 30 of them?
30 radios, correct. Handhelds, that we would use when we go to an incident. Right now, we use both 800 megahertz, and then also VHF radios, analog. We're going to be getting rid of the analog. We're running in, every place we go into now, the 800 megahertz radios have as good or better reception than the VHF. And we're the only organization in the area that uses VHF. So, we're going to be moving on from those and going to straight 800 megahertz radios. We will maintain a couple of the VHF's, just because when we're on scene, that's where our paging comes through, is VHF, and we wouldn't be able to be paged out to another run without being able to scan those. So, we'll keep a couple of them, but we're going to be moving on to 800 megahertz.
What I mean, are they good for a year, two years?
Oh, no, the, we, we do, we go through them. I mean, some of them do get damaged and, and that, but, I mean, obviously, the ones that we're using are obsolete, so we've had them a while. I couldn't give you an exact, but I would say that we probably get 10 years out of those radios, five to 10 years. You know, I would, I'd have to check with Alcom and see, but we do have some turnover, but it's not a every other year kind of thing. Okay, program stats, there's quite a few of them. The main thing under alarms is the total responses. You can kind of see that's been obviously going up. We're on pace for 2,300 calls this year. That generally, now that we're running ALS medical, advanced life support, we're running on every medical run in the city. That's where you see the jump up to seven, from 1,700 to 2,200. And that, because of people's use of, you know, calling 911 for everything, that goes up every year, one to 200 runs a year. Yes? I was going to cover that under, where I've got the medical supplies for that under my operating budget, and then Eric will be covering that also. Under this, we have everything from firefighter injuries, civilian, rental code enforcement, fire prevention, personnel training on page 90, community service miscellaneous, and then our inspection code enforcement. Any questions you guys have on any of the stats I can go over? Yes, of course.
Just out of curiosity, the hazardous condition, see the jump in there, is that an activated issue, or is it something specific?
Nothing specific. Anytime they, it depends on how they write the report. If they run into any hazardous condition, it's noted on the report.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you exactly what those hazardous conditions were that got us to 74. I'd have to go back and look individually at each one. But nothing of note, there isn't an epidemic of some certain hazard that we're running into, really.
So, somebody calls 911 and say they have a medical emergency, something like that, ambulance on the way, you guys go there first, check up with the person for the ambulance gets there, or?
Depending on the time of day, we tend to beat the ambulance there on the calls, but a lot of them, depending on what it is, normally we'll run a one-truck response on, unless it's a heart attack, or difficulty breathing, something where someone has chest pain, things like that, we'll run two trucks. We generally run one truck. And a lot of that is, we get there, we can get there faster, we provide extra manpower, you know, if there's a problem with the ambulance, depending on the number of runs they have, they only have a certain number of ambulances. A lot of times, we're holding down the scene for 20, 30 minutes. Doesn't happen all the time, but it does happen. And this way, now, since we're advanced life support certified, we can provide the exact same level of care that the ambulance can. We just don't transport.
They give them minivan or something, put them in the minivan, call good.
Yeah, and actually, we'll talk about that on the rest, a little, a little bit later.
Just an observation, if I can.
Yes.
I'm in a lot of houses, so I'm really glad to see and hear such positive feedback from the Verbo people. I want you guys to know that, you know, my opportunity to say that at least, to see those certifications hanging, you know, in very visible spaces as you walk in the, the houses, it's always, you know, I'm really excited about that. And I think that the way that you guys have handled it, going through the process with the homeowners, it's been nothing but good experiences from what I've heard. And, and they really are as concerned about it as you are. And that, that was just something I wanted to bring up as an observation.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions on the program stats? Move on to page 91, the fee schedule. The changes noted are all bolded, and those all represent a 2% increase, rounded up to the nearest $5. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And actually, there is one addition under the, the first column, fire marshal overtime inspections. What those are is, when the fire marshal has to do an inspection on tents or an occupancy on the weekend, and he has to come in on overtime, we do charge for those hours. And that, we've done that, it was never in our fee schedule, so I did add that in, so that we have everything that we do charge on one, on the sheet. Otherwise, they are those 2% increases.
Is the four or more false alarms in 12 months' time?
Generally not enforced. It depends, we used to have a lot of problems with the old hospital. Anytime it got humid out, we were running on their alarm system over and over and over. And that was put in, this was put in years ago just for that. Hopefully, we won't have that problem with the new hospital. We haven't so far. It generally doesn't happen. Every once in a while, when one Marquette, excuse me, when one Marquette place was trying to open up, we were getting a lot of alarms to them. I believe we find them one time, and then it stopped. It's just generally so that it, it prods the business into fixing their alarm system, if it's not some, if it's something under their control. If not, we, you know, we use our discretion. If it's not something they can control, and they are trying, we generally won't utilize that.
Is it easier with the new hospital, because you basically go in, everything's laid out, sorry, at the old hospital, like a zoo, trying to find your way around, it's pretty easy with the new hospital. If there's a problem, you can get to the person without having to go down two floors, over a floor, up a stairs, you run.
I'm, I'm sure it is. We haven't had, I'd have to look, I'm not sure how many incidents we've had there since they've opened, but I'm sure it is a lot easier for them to navigate.
I'm curious, with the cliff rescue non-resident?
Yes. Basically, uh-
This just struck me as a little odd.
Basically, for the ones under it, also watercraft, fire, things like that, a lot of departments will collect not for, to non-residents. They'll charge their insurance companies for response for watercraft fires, vehicle fires, extrac- vehicle extrications. We have cliff rescues, that was added in years back. The only time that we've gone after anyone for a cliff rescue, we had a gentleman that had two minors with him, and he talked them into climbing down the rocks, we had to respond. And the Coast Guard responded. We did attempt to collect for our time. It was, he was from out of town, and we were never able to collect. But it's not a, it's not an everyday thing.
That just struck me as curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's great.
But like, sure, being developed so much, you know, you've talked about the past, about possibly getting a, a water fire board or something like that, you know, because you're, because so much water developed, you think about, you know, if there's ever a fire, you might need something to pump out water or something.
As of, as of right- As of, as of right now, it's not a high priority. Um, with so much being built on the waterfront, we do lose some access because it's lakeside. Um, unfortunately, for where we live, we would probably only have access to a fire boat for about five months out of the year. Otherwise, you know, cause it's the wa, it's iced up. So I don't know how much use we would, uh, how much we'd be able to use that yet. We'll see in ten to twenty years, is the, you know, if the waterfront builds up more and we have, don't have access, but we're good to go right now.
Just have Gary budget for the helicopter for you, that's all you do.
Uh, any other questions on page ninety-one?
No.
Okay, uh, fire budget, um, as with, uh, several of these budgets, about ninety percent of this is, uh, wages. Um, about ten percent discretionary. Um, the first thing that I'd wanna talk about is the operating budget, which is line seven forty. Um, we talked, uh, Mike mentioned earlier, uh, what we call an echo unit. Um, I do have down there echo unit medical gear, and let me explain what that is. Um, right now, we run, uh, advanced life support medical engines. Those engines run between a half a million and nine hundred thousand dollars apiece. And because we're running advanced life support and running twenty-three hundred runs per year, uh, they're getting a lot more, uh, wear and tear on them. And they're also being exposed to a lot of salt during the winter. Um, what a lot of departments have done and what we're looking at doing is using, uh, uh, basically a Ford Explorer. Uh, basically, it'll look just like my truck, uh, the chief's vehicle. Um, we would run two paramedics or a paramedic and an EMT, uh, and a full suite of medical gear, which is what this, uh, charge would be for on my operating budget. And that way, it takes about sixty percent of the runs, uh, and the wear and tear and the extra salt off of those frontline apparatus. Um, lowers maintenance costs. Um, it's a, they are a little bit safer to run because they have a shorter braking distance, they're a little bit more nimble. Um, they're, uh, so it, it's basically to try to extend the life of those frontline fire trucks, so that we're not running them into the ground, and we don't have to replace them as soon.
So if, you know, a full fire, you know, let's say that somebody said Gary's having chest pains in his, in his office, cause he's, you know, looking at Mike's budget, and you have to go rescue him, you send your little Ford Explorer over there, send the big fire truck with four guys, and you just send two doctors in, in the for, in the little SUV, all the equipment, they go in and play doctor for a while till the ambulance gets there and then call good.
Yeah, basically, what would we, what we would end up doing is any one-truck responses, we would be sending that echo unit. And again, that echo unit is just a industry term that they use for those, it's basically just an SUV. Um, anything that's a major, uh, like a heart attack, a full code, uh, we would still be sending that echo unit, but we would also be backing that up with the other, one of the other, uh, fire apparatus, just because of the manpower needed. But it would reduce, uh, the runs on those fire trucks, about twelve to fourteen hundred runs a year.
So, um, looking at the numbers, last year, we spent just about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. This year, we're looking at a hundred and three thousand. So you're saying that echo, I'm looking at line seven forty.
Correct.
Um, so is that, that hundred, that hundred and three is basically that unit? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, actually, the a hundred and three thousand is this year's year-end estimate. Uh, the fiscal year requested is a hundred and forty thousand four hundred. About forty-five thousand of that is the medical equipment for the echo unit, and the large majority of that is the heart rate monitor. They run about thirty-five thousand dollars, unfortunately.
I think Mike's got a Suburban, you could use a Suburban, couldn't you?
The, uh, I, I'm gonna add to that, that the, uh, uh, the vehicle will be in the motor pool budget that you'll be seeing in another night. And that- And the, just, just the, some, most of you, some of you will be here for a while, so I mean, we're looking at two new fire vehicles in twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and this, this is to get those pumpers to that point. Okay, so.
I think the LP has one of those electric trucks.
He's one of those?
Yeah, I mean-
Save Gary money on gas.
The, uh, the wear on those trucks is unusual, in that because there's so much water and dampness, I mean, just the, the, uh, interaction I've had the last few, few weeks dealing with, uh, motor pool and, and the possibility of doing, uh, other fire vehicles. Uh, I've learned a lot about those things, just rot from the inside out, and it's, it, they're a different kind of vehicle, so I wanna get them to last as long as we can.
I just don't wanna buy a fire truck.
No, I don't.
I mean, not, not with the money. If we can extend them in any way, it's, it's money well spent.
They are quite exorbitantly expensive.
Yes. Now, off the wall question, do we name the new truck?
That's Fred's, he doesn't want a fire truck.
Fred doesn't want a little bitty fire truck, sorry, thank you.
We, we generally name the, the fire trucks. I don't, we've never named, uh, an SUV, though.
Call it Mike.
We could auction the name off, see who wants to name off.
We're open to it.
I have friends that work at, that go to auctions all the time, we could look for a deal for, you know, that'd be Gary happy, you know?
Well, thank you.
Buy a new goat, you know?
Let's get in the, in the waterfront.
Uh, the next, there, there is other, uh, I did list some of the other equipment, I can go into what that is if you, if you'd like. The next one, uh, is seven seven five. Uh, the only difference there, or the only addition there, are, uh, gear lockers. Right now, our turnout gear, which runs about twenty-two hundred dollars a set, are thrown over metal racks, and they're exposed to exhaust, they're exposed to sunlight. They break down a lot quicker. What we'd like to do is put actual lockers in so that they're protected, you know, protects that investment going forward a little. So we can, again, extend those out, so we're not replacing them so much. Um, eight oh one, uh, this is just a breakdown of, uh, what basically is in that account. Some of this was covered in years past under my operating budget, but it really fell under this, so I'm moving it to that this year. Uh, we have OSHA mandated physicals, uh, a lot of testing for different, uh, uh, different things, uh, the pumpers, ladder hose, um, is farmed out. Uh, the heart rate monitors we talked about, we do have a contract for those for maintenance that runs about thirty-five, thirty-seven hundred a year. And then we also have three, uh, potential retirees in the next fiscal year, so there, there's funds in there for new hiring, uh, testing and physicals for that. Um, eight fifty, uh, we talked about the portable radio grant match that runs about twenty thousand dollars. If you look at, uh, line eight fifty, it looks, uh, let me find the right line here, sorry. Under communications, it, it looks like a large amount, uh, that's the total amount, including the ninety percent that the grant would, uh, provide, the two hundred and seventeen thousand. So our, the actual cost on that budget would be about a hundred and ninety thousand less than that. It's just basically, you take the full amount here minus the revenues that we talked about earlier, so that's why that looks inflated. And then, uh, do you have the, uh, cost in there for the echo unit radios, uh, and then miscellaneous stuff beyond that? So if there are no questions on that, I'll move on to the rental inspection, rental code enforcement budget, three seven one. On, I'm sorry, page ninety-three. And starting with revenue, uh, we're at about fifty thousand five hundred, uh, estimated for this year. Um, it does vary. Um, you can see that twenty eighteen actual was a little over fifty-five thousand, so it's gonna, uh, and then with the potential increases in the fee schedule, it'll go up from there. Uh, there will be a change, uh, that I'll cover on the, uh, on the budget page, on the next page, for the rental inspector wages. But if there's any questions on the revenue or anything else there, I can answer that. Okay, if you wanna move to page ninety-four, which is going to be the rental code enforcement budget. Uh, there are some changes. Uh, I can give you the numbers if you wanna pencil them in. Uh, it was a late addition yesterday. First line, seven oh two for salaries and wages for the, uh, last column to the right, for the requested amount. That thirty thousand seven ten, uh, will change to sixty-two five thirty-six. The next line, uh, where it reads seven thirty-five, that'll change to nine oh seven. Uh, unemployment insurance, the next line that is forty-five, that will change to thirty-three dollars. Workers' comp, that's listed at one hundred and five, will change to two thousand one hundred and nine. And the seven twenty-three, which is the retirement, fire police, it's zero now, that will change to twenty-six thousand one sixty-nine. And then finally, the total at the bottom, that will change from the thirty-seven nine ninety-five to ninety-eight thousand one fifty-four. And I will explain. The, uh, and those numbers, uh, haven't been vetted through Gary, but I did get those directly from human resources, so they should be quite accurate. I covered up my sheet here, one second. Okay, uh, I need to give you a little history on that position. Um, the program started in two thousand four, and originally, uh, from that date, uh, we utilized three on-duty firefighters during their afternoon shifts, uh, during the work week to cover the rental code enforcement inspections. So we had three rental inspectors. Um, we started running in problems with that, uh, for a couple of reasons, or, uh, there were a couple of, uh, things that ended up happening. One, we ran into staffing issues. Uh, when they were out doing their inspections and we were down to our minimum staffing, which is six, we were basically down to a five-man minimum because they were off doing their inspections. Um, we ran into staffing problems because of that and safety problems. When we went to, uh, fires, vehicle extrications, we were a man down. We dealt with that successfully since two thousand four. Unfortunately, uh, because of some of the, uh, who we had as inspectors and what their ranks were, what we ran into a lot recently is depending on who was off that day, we would end up with, uh, firefighters that were driving when they technically shouldn't have been. We had guys in charge of a station that weren't at the rank or the experience where they should have been, so it created some safety problems. Um, I talked to Mike, and as of, uh, April first of this year, we moved them out of that position and back to, uh, basically as line firefighters and paramedics, and we moved to a part-time rental inspector position. Um, that did alleviate those problems, uh, that we had with staffing and with safety. There are a couple of things that happened there. Our inspector had to take another job after four months on the job, so his last day was August eighth. And currently, after three weeks, we don't have any applicants for that position to take it. Um, also, uh, the current workload, uh, we're looking at about seventeen hundred inspections for that position this year. Um, in talking with, uh, the, uh, part-time inspector that, that just left employment, it was his recommenda, he, he just said there's no way in twenty-nine hours a week, going forward, he would have been able to do all of the inspections. Without pushing us past the ordinance mandated three years on re-inspections, there would be no way to do it. The other, uh, one other reason, right now, uh, Fire Marshal Tom Dunleavy takes all of the maintenance, uh, complaints on the apartments. That's not in his job description, he just does it to help out. Unfortunately, his time is gonna be constrained going forward because the state this year is expected to mandate, uh, that all municipalities take over, uh, assembly occupancy inspections on the commercial side, which we haven't had to do. That's, uh, anything, any business over forty-nine, uh, that can house over forty-nine people, so bars, restaurants and the like. And so he's gonna have to take those over, so we would be reverting those back to that position, uh, if we can get the full-time position.
So when a new hotel opens, you have to go and, he has to go and inspect the new, when the new hotel opens, and founders landing you, he has to go through and inspect the whole thing, or?
Correct. Um, and lastly, uh, one thing that we were looking at, uh, one of the codes that we enforce with the rental inspection position is called the International Property Maintenance Code, or IPMC. Uh, we handle the inside of the building, basically, or the inside of the house for all the rental, uh, residential buildings. Um, as of right now, the zoning code enforcement official uses the exact same code and does the exterior of all the residential buildings in town. What we'd like to do is pull those inspections under one position instead of two different departments and positions, and have that under this position also. And so they'd be able to take care of all of those inspections. Um, the zoning enforcement officer has a little bit of difficulty, uh, getting into a lot of these properties. They can't just go on the property and take pictures even of the exterior of the house. We can, just because of the difference in the, in the department and the position. Um, so for efficiency's sake, we'd like to pull that into that position. Um, that would, and again, that would allow Tom to do what he needs to do as a fire marshal, uh, going forward. It would allow the zoning officer to focus on zoning court, uh, zoning code enforcement specifically, and bring that under one, uh, one position. And then, uh, with that number that you're looking at of the ninety-eight thousand for that, uh, total budget, and sixty-two thousand for the, the salaries, we do pull in, like I said, between fifty and sixty thousand a year in revenue to offset that somewhat. If there's any, I'm sorry. Oh, sure, and, uh, right now, uh, the short-term rentals are capped at two hundred and fifty. Uh, we're at, as of today, two hundred and twenty-seven, uh, with several pending. Uh, we expect that to reach the cap, uh, in the next three months at the rate we're going. You know, so, uh, that's where we're at with the, the short-term rentals. I don't, if we stay at that cap, we should stay at that, uh, depending on the fee schedule, again, fifty to sixty thousand revenue, uh, going forward. There is a, a large turnover. Um, we do have well over three thousand rental units in town. The housing stock is over fifty percent rentals, and it's going, it is going up, that is increasing every year.
Any chance maybe the retired fireman could help out maybe a little bit or something? You know, we, we, well, you go a couple of retired firemen that can help out, maybe training somebody or, you know, just help you without having to send your fireman in there to do the job. You know, since they're, don't wanna be on a call, even though Gary's paying them, you know, they could help out, you know, at least a little bit for you, you know, and?
Ian, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. It's a good presentation, and I certainly understand you need to increase from time to time. This, on page ninety-three, where it shows rental inspector part-time, so that would be full-time?
Correct.
Do you have an estimated salary instead of that twenty-six thousand for that page?
Uh, I'm not sure where that one comes from. If you look at the wages on ninety-four, the salaries and wages, uh, the seven oh two, the first line item.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the thirty thousand seven ten, I believe, is, is the short, or, I'm sorry, the part-time wage that was budgeted. And that would go up to sixty-two thou, sixty-two thousand five thirty-six.
I get, okay, but there's a four thousand dollar difference, so that's where I'm confused.
Those- Is that what, oh, is that, okay, I didn't-
Oh, it's a secretary. Thank you.
That's what, that's what that extra is.
Okay. Thank you, if that helps. And my second question is, you had mentioned that maybe this rental inspector could do some of the zoning pictures and things? I'm gonna ask Ron if we run into any legal issues with going in for a rental inspection, taking pictures, and then turning around and giving all those pictures to our zoning department, without possibly notifying the resident?
That's-
Yeah. Outside and inside of a person's home? No, but with a rental inspector, they have to go inside to inspect for rental, but can, then they turn those around to the zoning department?
None of what we're gonna be doing would be sharing any, none of the information would be specifically to share with zoning.
Okay.
Those, basically, the, the exterior IPMC, uh, inspections that they handle right now in zoning, don't have anything to do with zoning. Basically, they're maintenance, just like we look at the maintenance on the in, interior, they're covering the maintenance on the exterior, and it would just be pulling that into one position. So if people had, uh, you know, a hole in their roof or something like that, and a, a neighbor complained, then they mandate that they fix it, just like we do on the interior, we'd just be pulling that under one position. It wouldn't be anything where we would be taking pictures of where someone put their fence and then calling zoning and forwarding it to them for violation. That isn't what-
So explain the hole in the fence scenario, or hole in the roof scenario to me again, cause I'm not understanding the difference between-
Sure. Uh, when we go into, uh, right now, the way it works, uh, it, when one of our inspectors or the part-time inspector goes into, uh, a house, a rental, um, they're only, they're only looking at the interior of the building. Uh, they're, you know, they're looking for a lot of different things, but it's only on the interior. Now, and so separately now, the, uh, zoning code enforcement official takes complaints, or if they notice, uh, someone has, uh, a hole in their roof, like I said, or, and it's not just rentals, that does cover all residential, uh, not commercial, but all residential, uh, buildings in town. If they notice someone's house bas, basically isn't maintained, it's dilapidated. Uh, we've had instances where chimneys, uh, needed to be tuck pointed, they were about ready to fall over. Right now, the zoning code enforcement official deals with the exterior of all the residences. We deal with the interior- We deal with the interior of the residential rentals, and that would just be pulling it under one position, so it's not split between departments.
Just for the rentals? And that would only be for the rentals?
The exterior would be all residences, all residential buildings.
This new person would do? This rental inspector would do?
Correct.
So it's really rental...
They would just be taking that over from...
So it's really rental inspector and some zoning, or some...
It's not zoning, though. It's maintenance.
Code enforcement, okay.
Code enforcement. Maintenance code enforcement, which we are, which that position already does.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't going to be any issue with us saying, "We're coming in for a rental inspection. Oh, by the way, you have a rooster."
And again, we don't, that, that is zoning, and they will not be covering that. It would only be maintenance on the exterior of the building. And as it is now, when our rental inspectors go into a resi- a rental residential building, we only can deal with the inside, but if there's a hole in the roof, we, we call the zoning code enforcement official, and they follow up on it. It's just that it's split between departments.
And there's not a legal issue there? They've got to follow the rules, it's just, I just didn't want to be trying to like...
The idea is not to look for something that we can't do without a warrant.
Yep. Got it, thank you.
Further clarification, I think?
Yes.
Taking photos, one of these positions is required to take photos of the exterior of the house.
Correct. I believe.
The interior inspection would not be, wouldn't be taking interior photos during that inspection.
We already do, yes. If there, it helps with writing the, to let them, the person know, you know, basically, what was found maintenance-wise.
Right.
They will take photos of some of it and attach it to the report.
Okay. There's not a set list of ten things that you're going into photo, you're going into just specific, here's what you got to fix.
Correct.
And just to, okay, clarify, just a small point is that our rental inspection, the volume, is really what's pushing this more than anything. You know, we didn't have short-term rentals until about a year and a, two years ago, maybe, and at the time when we instituted our short-term rental ordinance, I think we had like sixty of them, didn't we? Something like that? Sixty short-term rentals that we registered. We're up to the, getting near the cap now, so it's, it's really taken off. Long-term rentals are, are growing. I don't know that we're ever going to have, it's kind of off-topic, but I don't know that we're ever going to recommend raising that short-term rental amount. I mean, I know we could probably go beyond that, but I don't know how acceptable that's going to be to the public. That's a different discussion, but the two-fifty there and the other rentals is, is about the max we can handle now with this new position. I don't know that any way we could handle it without this position. We were actually discussing going into five-year rotations on inspections and longer, just to try to accommodate it, but that created such a safety gap for us that we, we opted to go this route.
I think it's a good, innovative, and rational solution. So I, I hope we'll be able to, to make it work.
Is there somewhere on this website, the city website, that somebody says, "Somebody wants to do a rental." Okay, they rent my house, or somebody go online and say, "Okay, you guys at the city website, Ian's got his stuff that they look for, you guys, if you're zoning guys, is there something they can follow? Okay, here's the punch list that says, okay, if you want to do a rental, here's just the follows." Or something like that out there, Ian, or...
Yes, there is. We, we do give them key points to, to look for before they come for an inspection.
So basically, there's something on the website that they can, they can download and say, "Okay, here's stuff that we look for in your house, make sure it's up to date, or make sure this isn't done right, or gotcha?"
Correct. Every time we send out a registration, part of that registration packet is information, just like that.
So before you guys come inspect, they can say, "Okay, we got to do this, this, and this before we can get the guys in this." Okay, we got most of your list done. Come on, inspect, is that what you do?
Correct.
Mike?
Yes.
Um, just, well, can, can you look to see when that ordinance is up, though? I'm not saying right now, but just because I'll forget. I think that the short-term rental, I think we're supposed to review it every couple of years?
Sure, I will look, but I don't recall any...
I'm not saying right now, I just don't want to forget that.
Yeah, I don't recall there being any sunset or anything on it, but...
I think we're supposed to just look at it every twelve months. Twelve months, okay.
I mean, we did adjust the fee, no, that was the food trucks, we adjusted the fees one time, but, yeah.
I can't recall either, but I just, I'm just curious and whatnot.
Anything further, Chief?
Not on that one. Last one we would have is the waterfront safety budget, page one fifteen. And there is generally no revenue applicable to this budget. Authorized positions, see the head lifeguard, assistant head lifeguard, and lifeguards. Where it says thirty lifeguards, that's being very generous. This year, we have nineteen. That doesn't really change, we, we budget it off of the open hours, not on the, on the number of guards. The reason that it's lower for fiscal year two thousand and twenty than fiscal year two thousand and nineteen is we won't be, we're not looking at funding South Beach because we haven't had any luck in hiring enough guards to do that. We do need the thirty guards to be able to cover that beach also. If we happen to get that many and we're able to get a budget adjustment at that time, I believe it would be about twenty thousand dollars extra to guard that beach. Below that are program statistics for the beaches, attendance, how many days they were open, and then the averages. McCarty's is on that page, and then, following on one sixteen, are South Beach, Tourist, and Clark. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I'll move on to the budget. Okay, page one seventeen is the budget. There really aren't any changes in the discretionary side of it. As you see, wages are one-oh-six. There really isn't anything else to note. Okay, if there are any other questions, that's all I have.
Further?
Yes.
Is there anything to know in terms of Pine Ridge response?
As of right now, no. They can't give any determin- they can't determine an exact date yet. They're still dealing with investigations on the roof. Once that's done, they have to get all the utilities up, egress, fire alarm system, all that kind of stuff. That has to be inspected by the county before they will allow occupancy. And then they also have to deal with the elevators, because a majority of the residents have to use the elevators. And it hasn't been determined yet what it's going to take to fix or replace those. There's just too many moving parts right now to give a date.
Is it, you guys doing the special, is like a building inspector, is that somebody from the state doing everything, or it's...
The state did their investigation, that's been completed. Right now, it's the insurance company investigators that are doing their inspections. After that, again, Pine Ridge will, or the Housing Authority will determine with the utilities what needs to be done. Once all that work is done, it'll be certified by the county, then they'll grant occupancy. But there's no way to determine a date right now.
So the insurance guys, they hear somebody go look, do, do an inspection like you do anything else, and then after everything's done, they say, "Okay, we're going to fix it up," and you guys have to go back in with the fire, have to go back in inspector, you guys are done now that everything's done?
We'll be done by that point. It will be on the County Building Codes Office to certify for occupancy.
It was all in the county, no, gotcha.
And is, is there any budget impact to the event, to us?
Not to my department, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Chief Ian.
By the way, thank you again for the great response of Pine Ridge. That could have been a huge tragedy, and, you know, you guys and the police department made that work as well as the residents there, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we'll, we're almost there. We'll ask Police Chief Blake to present the police chief, the police budget, and we'll start on page eighty-three.
Do I take a quick second? To stretch your legs or anything, or...
Go.
Your last, you get whatever you want.
He doesn't, to me, on purpose.
You drank that whole bottle while you were waiting back here, right?
I know. Good evening, Your Honor, and fellow commissioners. I'll be here to present the police, proposed police budget for the two thousand and twenty fiscal year. And like Gary said, we're going to start on page eighty-three. Couple items that I just wanted to bring to your attention on the revenue and applicable to this account is, for the maps, you'll notice that private sources for schools, the maps, currently, the school district contributes fifteen thousand dollars, and the Kaufman Foundation contributes ten thousand dollars to help offset the costs associated with our school resource officer. We have been in contact with both of them and have met on several occasions to try to add some additional funding from both those agencies for that position. Another item I'd like to note would be the ten thousand dollar donation to the K-9 Fund, which we received from the Charter Spectrum, and you were all present for that. Are there any questions on any of the other line items on this topic, which would be the revenue?
Can I add one little piece of information? For the authorized positions, how many, once you mention...
I was just going to touch base on the next one.
Oh, okay, I thought you were...
I was just going to let them look through that.
All right, I thought you were skipping over that.
That's okay. No, it's good. If there's not any other questions, I'll move on to the authorized positions. We are currently authorized for thirty-nine positions. Thirty-four of those are sworn police officers. We also have four support staff, clerical dispatchers, and then one support staff, which is our parking enforcement. Those are all full-time positions. The crossing guards and park patrol are part-time seasonal positions. We currently have three vacancies at our department. Two of those are work-related injury complaints, or vacancies, and one is a retirement detective captain, Michael Kohler, recently retired. If you notice, in the detective captain position, there's a difference in the wage for the two thousand and twenty season, and that is due that the new detective captain will start off at the low step increase for management, mid-management, which is determined by Human Resources. You'll notice the patrol captain is at his top increase, step increase, so his wage will not increase, only due to the two percent increase per year. Any questions? I have not filled that position right now. Yeah, I plan on filling that position, but what I did is I asked the city manager, city manager, we have a conditional offer of employment to a patrol officer right now in the academy, and what I'm looking to do is fill that vacancy because of the two other vacancies due to injuries to try to plug some holes as far as staffing goes. Our patrol division is required, per the collective bargaining unit, to have minimum staffing on duty. And right now, with those two vacancies due to injuries and the recent retirement, I'm trying to get a fresh patrol officer onboard to help alleviate some of the overtime associated with those injuries. So he's given me that position with the agreement to delay for a period, small period of time of filling that captain's position. So that'll allow me to save some money over the, over that period of time. Is that clear?
Can Mike help you out?
I'm trying to get him to come down, but... Are there any, are there any questions on the authorized positions at all?
Mike kind of knows what he's doing, doesn't he? Or is he unqualified now that he's been retired so long?
No, he's totally, totally knows what he's doing. The next page, which would be eighty-four, program statistics. As you noted on the front, as far as the staffing goes, we currently have one officer assigned to the upset undercover narcotics division that is run through the Michigan State Police. A portion of that wage is offset by a burn J grant, which is applied for each year by the Michigan State Police to help fund that position. So that eighteen thousand dollars is a reimbursement to us towards that position. We also have one detective sergeant currently assigned to the Internet Crimes Against Children ICAC unit, and he works in that unit two days a week, and that's at the Eighth District Headquarters over off of Industrial. And the benefit for that is the state police has been sending him through training that is provided free of charge to this position, which then in turns allows, allows us to use that training at the, at the police department level. The big one would be imaging cell phones. So when we have cell phones that are utilized in a crime or something, our officer, who is trained by the state police to image those phones, allows us that access for our whole department, so... And they've also sent him to some other conferences and trainings at no charge to the city. So it's a really good partnership. And like I said earlier, the, the schools have contributed to our school resource officer to help offset any of the costs associated with that, so... Any questions on program statistics?
Gary mentioned they got a meth burning machine at the waste room. Is that some of your upset guy could help with them, you know?
We do not have a meth burning, no, that's not, we, no, we do not. As far as the ski, fee, fee schedule, the only thing of real notice, we haven't made any changes this year except for the fireworks ordinance that was recently passed, and we upgraded that fine to the thousand-dollar rate, which was approved when the ordinance was passed by the commission. Are there any questions on the fee schedule?
To a point, question about when we were discussing PiPAC and the issues of parking on the island, et cetera, et cetera, there are some numbers you had relating to the number of tickets written on a given weekend. Has that continued to be a problem, or...
No, I think between Public Works, the enforcement, stepping up the enforcement, the stepping up of the education to the public, I think that we've seen those numbers start to draw down. It's also a little bit weather-dependent, but we've, we've worked with city staff to help alleviate the opportunities for people to park there, and that's through the ditching and through the posts and through the signage, so...
Okay.
I think, you know, there are still some, depending on the day, if it's a real warm day, there, do people go out there to utilize that? And there are issues, or citations being issued.
I'd love to see some numbers for the year, you know, when the season ends, just to get a feel for...
Okay, and I can maybe include that in the annual report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Page eighty-seven would be the expenditures. A couple of things I just wanted to note, there are a couple increases to a couple of my line items this year, proposed increases. I guess I would start with first with the seven-forty. Seven-forty is our operating supplies. That covers the day-to-day operations of the police department. We've seen an increase due to hiring three or four officers over the last year, two years, increase in purchasing uniforms, so that's one of the items that we are including in there. Also, we are looking to continue our TASER lease. We have a lease program with tasers, and that increase will be absorbed in that line item. And I'm also looking at a firearm upgrade. Our current firearms are thirteen years old, and our armors are running into some issues with the maintenance, yearly maintenance of them. We have an opportunity to work with Keeslers to reduce that cost by trading our old handguns in at a substantial savings.
What do you want to get?
I don't want to tell you.
A what?
I don't want to tell you. It wasn't up to me, it was a, it was a department-wide evaluation of what would be the best and most cost-effective...
Which is?
I don't want to tell you.
There's a gun shop in...
No, I'm just kidding, it's a, it's a, they're looking at a Glock.
There's a gun shop in Harvey, they could probably help you, you know?
I mean, my, my nineteen-eleven dates from nineteen-twenty-one.
I'm trying, what I, yeah, the decision is being made based on our firearms instructors, our armors, and the officers themselves that are utilizing them. We had a day where they were tested, so I'm, I'm going off of their recommendation, so...
I will not criticize that.
Okay.
Laugh at it, but I won't criticize it.
But I have some old guns in the house that maybe Mike knows how to use, you know? They could probably use that.
And then the last thing I was going to add to that line item was a, a small increase for, if you've noticed, somehow we got skipped in the whole Johnson control upgrade. And I'm trying to eliminate the rock garden at the bottom of the stairs, but there's some increases, or some improvements I would like to make within my department, and I've been working with Eric Steeman and, and city staff to try to do that in the most cost-effective way, so... Well, I mean, there's two windows in that building.
Tell the truth.
What?
You were invited to the JCI meeting, you just didn't show up.
I defer. I defer. Um, the other one I wanted to touch base on was the eight oh one, the professional contractual. Uh, the eight oh one basically covers our UPOS, uh, and some other items, including our, uh, dues for our association with organizations such, such as the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police, um, our K nine certification, um, organization, which is the National Association for K nine handlers. Um, uh, we also, uh, utilize our professional development, uh, training for our supervisors, and, um, a, a lot of that training associated with, um, administration, uh, it comes out of that account. Uh, the UPOS is kind of an interesting account, 'cause we have an agreement with UPOS to lodge all of our, um, stray cats, dogs, skunks, chickens, turtles, fish.
No alligators.
No, yeah. Well, not yet. Snakes and stuff, but...
I'm there for Mike's house.
The interesting thing that I've learned about that is, um, as a citizen, if you come across a bunch of cats in your garage and you bring them out to UPOS, that comes out of my budget. It's not just the ones that I catch. So I get a y- I get a monthly statement from UPOS about the number of, um, animals that are brought to, um, the facility, not just by our staff, but by residents of the city. And, uh, we've had some sit-downs with them, and we've had, we've had a pretty good working agreement that if somebody brings in seventeen cats, you know, that, that we're not gonna be charged for seven days for seventeen cats, uh, and maxed out. So, uh, we've had that dialogue with them, but there is that factor where, um, I guess, according to some of my staff, there is an increase in cats up in north, the northern part of Marquette, the city, up, up towards like the Wood nickel and that area, um, where we're seeing an increase in the number of animals being brought to UPOS. Um, so, um, just a little explanation of why that...
I know a guy that's over at Marquette whose dog got loose, went to Beef Roofers or Burgers and got caught by one of your guys, and ended up at, uh, UPOS jail, and he kinda get disappointed that someone's in jail, but...
Yeah.
Is that how it works? Like, you guys pick up, if something gets, if you see a stray animal, somebody calls and say, straight, you pick him up and bring him to UPOS, or?
Well, no, what we usually do is, what we'll, we'll do is the officer will call into the board, and if it's reported, we try to connect the dog before. UPOS is a last resort for us. We'll try to work with staff.
Okay, let's keep the conversation focused on the budget, so we can get out of here before midnight.
Okay. And then the last, uh, increase would be, uh, to eight fifty, which is communications, and Todd, uh, kind of explained a little bit about it. Um, there were some camera upgrades i- in the city that, uh, I've been working with Todd to, uh, get back in, in, uh, in functioning man- and functioning, um, that were taken down during the JCI, um, program. And then also, we currently run our lean, which is our law enforcement information network through the county portal. Um, and most of you know, we recently went to e-citations and e-crash. Um, the, the county will not lower their firewalls to allow e-crash and e-citation onto that network. So we'll be working with CoreTal on, to go direct through them, which will allow us better access to our tablets inside of our cars to outside programs. So there's a small increase, um, in that budget item. And that's it. Any questions on the expenditures?
You guys got a grant in to get the tablets or something like that for your cars that...
We already have those. That was, that was two budgets ago, we were able to procure those, so...
So you got that, you got the, all the type, so all those smart around ones, stuff is all just added in your tablet schedule?
Okay, moving on, moving on. So, page one fifty, which will be our drug forfeiture, and this is Gary's favorite one. Um, but what this is, is basically, I look at it as a savings account. This money was, um, uh, procured through forfeitures, um, whether it be drug-related, um, property-related. Um, there's no real revenue gains or, um, taken, you know, or, we don't really spend it on anything. It's kinda there. Um, our
goal, and what we originally used this fund for was starting the K nine program, um, you know, and, and getting that up and running. So that is kinda maintaining itself, and so right now, that money is just kinda sitting there in case we need it for something, um, to, um, you know, you know, like an emergency for the K nine, or if we're gonna look to replace the K nine or some equipment. So that's kind of it for that.
Or if they need a retirement key.
Right. And then another thing with the, with the forfeiture, there's not a lot of, uh, flexibility with it now. They've really kinda cracked down on the forfeiture laws, um, which is fine. Uh, uh, it really doesn't matter to us, but, um, we just don't have much relating to that.
Okay. CJG, criminal justice?
Yep, and so for the Criminal Justice Training Fund, uh, basically, this money is given to us, uh, from the state. Um, it's ba- yep, I'm sorry, fifty-six. And basically, this is based on the number of sworn police officers you have, uh, in your department. Um, we re- we receive a spring dispersment and a fall dispersment from the, uh, state MCOS, uh, and this money is designated strictly for training, um, of officers. Um, so what it basically breaks down to is about a hundred and eighty-eight dollars per officer towards training, um, that we have to use strictly for, um, training purposes. Um, and that's what that fund is for. We also match that fund in our, in our general revenue, uh, to increase that, to allow us the mandatory training that we need for our officers. And that's it for that one. If there's not any questions.
Gentlemen, any questions? Gentle ladies, seeing none, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chief Blake. Um, that concludes tonight's presentation, so we'll need a few days to recover from all the fun we had tonight. So the next meeting will be August nineteenth at five fifteen, which will be the John Swinson Show, and also the library will be presenting. And with that, uh, I don't know if the city manager has any comments.
Good. No comments? Whoa, whoa. We do have, uh, public comments, uh, public comments, not to exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments.
I'll be real fast then, please.
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic. Thank you very much for all the information. Chief, uh, Blake, there's three or four opportunities for PSAs for your department that would be very timely. The first one has to do with graff- graffiti. They just nailed the fit strip over the weekend with, uh, swastikas, and that's playing heavily on social media. I don't know if you can get some trail cameras or get a group to donate them, but that's gotta be shut down. The second one is, we just had a person have to be rescued at Black Rocks. There's never been lifeguards there. It was an NMU football player who pulled somebody out of the water. Uh, that should be investigated and, uh, recognized. I hope to see them here at the next meeting, but it'd be a, a good PSA to remind people there's no protection at Black Rocks. And the third one is, we just had a presentation Monday night on off-road vehicles, and they're pressing for access to the trails, and there's, uh, I joined a group supporting this fifteen-year-old girl who got hurt in, uh, off-road vehicle earlier this summer. She's now in pediatric intensive care down in Ann Arbor with a brain infection. So there's three opportunities for PSAs for your department. I didn't hear any communications budget, but I would hope that you take advantage of that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, comments from commissioners? Bingo?
I just, I'm hoping that we can keep these a little shorter moving forward, especially with our commissioner comments throughout, if they're not related to the budget process.
I hear that. Uh, just quickly, I just wanna, this is an opportunity for us to meet a lot of the players within the city staff that we don't get to run into very often. Um, and I just can't tell you how impressed I am each year. This is my second year, obviously, but, uh, going through this process and getting to know how involved they are and how good they are at their jobs, um, you know, we get to see the department heads frequently, but it's the staff that, uh, um, that does the work for the staff. And I just wanna say thank you to all of them and how impressed I am once more for, uh, all the work that they put in. Thank you.
Nothing? Mr. Campana?
Just impressed, as, uh, Paul said, I'm impressed that the, uh, staff came here as prepared as they are. They were, they did a well job. Good job.
Mr. Fraser?
Mr. Hill?
Good job.
Let me finish by just saying one thing. This, we, we all have to bear this in mind. This is the one opportunity during the year when most of the staff of the city have an opportunity to speak directly to city commissioners about their problems and their money and their funds and what they do. And although we might find it, in some cases, a little bit tedious, it is extremely important for them, and it's extremely important for us to understand it all. So, uh, our thanks and tip of the hat to him, to him. And that means, we're done.